2007, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Ms. Oplin. May we have the TV coverage and roll call, please?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria and Orca areas. Reprodcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. And for the roll call, Commissioner Brown here, Commissioner Blau.
Here.
Commissioner Valencia.
Here.
Commissioner Cooney.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Jackson is absent.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Ms. Black. You have the Agenda Status Report and the Projection Report, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. This morning, we have four regular items on your agenda, and we're ready to proceed with all of those items. With respect to the projection report, November 7th is proving to be a fairly busy day. We've got the transfer, Santa Barbara Ranch Transfer of Development Rights Program back before your Commission will be starting off the day with that item. We have rock revetment, conditional use permit, procedures for acceptance of general plan amendments and rezones will be coming back to your Commission for the San Inez Valley, and then beneficial ecological restoration projects, which is a matter that the Board referred back to the Department as a result of a permit action. November 14th and 28th are both going to be hearings in the North County in Santa Maria. The 14th has quite a number of items on it. I believe that the first item, the staff briefing on landscape bonds, since I'm the staff person on that, and I know I've done nothing about it, will not be moving forward. And I was expecting some information from the home builders, and I have not received anything yet. So, given where we're at, it's unlikely it'll happen that day, and we'll probably be rescheduled into the first of the year. November 28th also has a number of larger North County projects on it. The Hunter La Prisma Resort, which was, I guess, in the Santa Barbara news press yesterday on the front page. And we'd be happy to arrange for individual or site visits with two of the Commissioners if you'd like to see the site with some staff assistance. So, please just let us know. December 3rd, we still have set aside for the Tranquion Ridge project. I hope to know at your next meeting whether or not that will be going forward. In fact, I'm sure I'll know at your next meeting whether or not that matter will be going forward. If it does, it will be held in the Santa Maria Hearing Room as well. December 5th, we have scheduled for the Planning Commission Holiday Lunch. And because of that, we've tried to keep your agenda kind of to a minimum, and we've got two important Isla Vista projects on that day, both Alcalajo Road Widening and the Paradise Ivy Redevelopment Project. And then we're back up in Santa Maria for the last meeting of your Commission for the year on December 12th. And that hearing is also full with two fairly large projects. Into January, we have rescheduled two of the briefings that were previously scheduled for December to January 23rd. And those include the greenhouse gas emissions briefing and the Affordable Housing Workshop. And Mr. McGinnis is here, in case you wanted to discuss that particular date or anything else about that, that particular item. The SEQA training that the Commission requested will occur probably in late January or February. The training for staff is not happening until November and December of this year, so we wanted to follow that training. And tribal consultation as well will likely be in February. And that's all I had to report on the normal projection report. Following up on requests that we received at the last hearing and several hearings before that, I've compiled a list of projects that are active discretionary cases. It's fairly lengthy. It's 57 pages long. And there are a couple of caveats that I have to make about this report. It's more inclusive than items that'll come to your Commission. Unfortunately, I couldn't take out all of the zoning administrator cases. I tried to call out as many as I could. And then the Monacito Planning Commission cases are in this report as well. But I think it gives you a good indication of what's coming up, particularly in the Second, Third, Fourth and Fifth Districts that'll be coming to your Commission with a few zoning administrator cases in. And then you just have to keep in mind that those cases that are in Monacito will obviously be heard by the Monacito Planning Commission rather than yours. So, hopefully, this report will provide you what you're looking for. And if you have specific comments or information needs beyond this, just let me know, and I'll see if I can address them.
Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Black, on the Tranquion Ridge is tentatively scheduled for December 3rd, and that's a Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The second question I have is, this is an interesting list, a bit overwhelming. Do adjacent jurisdictions get a copy of this? Do they see this? I know you, your department has briefings with City of Galita periodically. Do you also do that with other jurisdictions with nearby projects?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, no, we don't.
Okay.
I mean, we do notify cities if there are projects that are adjacent to them, as is required by law. But we don't have regular meetings with staff of the other cities.
Okay, thank you.
Interesting suggestion.
Other comments? Ms. Black, I did notice in January, this is our first January peak, and there are five Wednesdays in January, so you might keep that in mind in terms of scheduling. I know we generally have a pretty good backlog of matters, briefings and projects in January. So, if for scheduling and balance purposes it makes sense to use that 5th Wednesday, it usually works as well as any for an available date.
I have your other report.
Except for Commissioner Blau.
Yes, that's actually, I just assume we never use a 5th Wednesday, to tell you the truth. That's what I'm going to plan to try and be on vacation, because it gives us as much as a 21-day window sometimes. I don't have a problem meeting Monday, Tuesday, if you need a special meeting, but I would really prefer we not use the 5th Wednesday if it's possible.
Okay. We have two viewpoints on the 5th Wednesdays, but in any event, we'll approach January's schedule as we get closer in December. Any other questions about the projection report at this point? Commissioner Blau.
I don't have a que, not so much a question about that, but are we planning to do another retreat like we did earlier this year? I would very much like to see that. And I think it's probably, Mr., even more important for Commissioner Jackson to tell you the truth. So, and I wouldn't mind seeing it sooner than later, because there are a number of issues I'd like to bring up with that report. If we could do it in January, that'd make me real happy.
Ms. Black, any reaction?
Mr. Chair, we'd be happy to schedule a retreat if the Commission would like one. And maybe we can talk about it at your next meeting. People can come with some ideas about topics that they'd like to discuss, and we can, we can talk about dates.
Thank you. I, I do think it's useful for the individual Commissioners, both experienced and new, to get caught up on things we don't have time to do in the normal course of business. But scheduling is certainly in sympathy with staff's other commitments, so let's talk about that as well. Thank you, Commissioner Blau. Anything else on the projection reporter while we're in this area of discussion? All right, then, the next item of business is the appointment of our Recording Secretary. Ms. Black, do you have a suggestion in that regard?
Mr. Chair, I have a strong suggestion. I would suggest that the Commission appoint David Villalobos as the Recording Secretary.
Commissioners, any, any discussion or motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion that we appoint him. Perfect.
And is there any discussion on this, or? I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor of the appointment of David Villalobos as the Recording Secretary for the remainder of 2007, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Yes, congratulations, right. Welcome. The public comment period is next. This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on matters not on today's agenda. And we normally allow three minutes for public comment. Are there any speaker slips this morning, Commissioner Brown? No. Anyone that wandered in and didn't have a chance? Doesn't appear so. Everyone is here for the, for the purposes of our four agenda items. So, we'll move directly to Planning Commissioners' informational reports. Anything to comment on, from any of the Commissioners? Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, there's, you know, there's a major fire in San Diego, and there are a lot of people that are losing their homes. There are about close to a million people displaced now, and so I hope that they know that our prayers are with them, and we feel sorry for all of them, you know? I hope that things work out. It looks like they're getting a handle on a portion of the fire. My granddaughter and another Jennifer Jones prophet and Robbie Coe are two Lompoc residents that have been evacuated from the area. And the homes in front of my granddaughter have all burned. And so, I hope that everything is fine with her, and we wish the best.
Yes, we do, Commissioner Valencia. Thank you very much. I think we realize at times like this that California is really a community, particularly Southern California. We certainly share the risk and concerns and experiences with wildfires, and it's never a question of whether we're going to have them, but just where and when. So, this is a terrible time for those in, south of us, and we just hope we can get through the rest of the dry season without any incidents closer to home. Anything else from Commission? Okay, then, we're ready to move to any divisional briefings. Ms. Black, do we have any this morning?
Mr. Chair, no, there's no divisional briefings this morning.
Thank you. We have two sets of minutes from October 3 and October 10. Hopefully, Commissioners have had a chance to review these. Let's take up first the October 3 meeting. Commissioner Blau was absent.
Move for approval, Mr.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes of October 3? Hearing on all those in favor of approving the minutes of October 3 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Commissioner Blau's abstention?
Abstention.
The second set of minutes are October 10.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes of October 10, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those are passed by unanimous vote then. And a very good job, Ms. Oplin. Those are lengthy minutes and lots of detail. Then we're ready for the report of our Director, and we're glad to see Mr. Baker here this morning. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I don't know, the moon must be right for something other than the fires, because we've had very little going on at the Board that relates back to the Planning Commission. But we do have some appeals that are coming, so it's not like that they've forgotten you. Single item that's gone on since we last met is that we presented a week ago yesterday a report on our project improvement team or the Oversight Committee. And after a number of questions and some discussion, it was concluded to continue that operation in terms of looking at process improvements for the, for the, the process of development, not just with the Planning and Development Department, but it includes other departments that are involved in that process. The other thing that I would mention that's not at the Board, there's been a considerable downturn in terms of construction activities in the county. And as a result of that, at the present ti, well, we have just gone through a, we've eliminated 10 positions in building and safety in order to bring our budget into balance for this calendar, this fiscal year. And our hope is that we won't have any further reductions, but at the present time, there was just no choice that we had to eliminate. Unfortunately, we've had a number of those that had vacancies, and so that it was not impacting employees as much as it possibly could have. So, some concerns there for employees, but hopefully, we will see that upturn in the, in the future in terms of the activities as far as, from the employee perspective. Not a happy time when you have a couple of employees that you tell them that we're going to have to lay them off, but that was what we had to do. So, other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Mr. Baker, with regard to the workload of planning and development, have, have there been any trends that you can identify with regard to the workload there, and has that any implications for your staffing?
There's been, there's been some downturn, but, but the inventory is such that I don't see that there's going to be impact there for quite a while. The other side of that is, is that, in talking with some developers to see what we might be seeing in the future in terms of impact, developers look at this in some respects as a time to start looking at developing their entitlements, so that when things take off, they'll be ready to go. And in some cases, maybe land costs might be a little less for them too, in terms of what they're doing. So, it's, but it has been a mixed bag with the, some of the developers I talked with. I mean, certainly those that have houses out there right now, and those have already gone through the planning process, are experiencing some delays in terms of what they're doing with those houses. And those are particularly in the, mostly in the North County area where there were some fairly large tracts. So, they're, they're in somewhat of a delay mode. But then, a couple of others saying they're going to be going forward, because they think that the, the market's going to be there by the time that they get their houses finished. So, they've still got some work to do in terms of those projects. So, we are holding firm in terms of our, from the planning side as related, as contrasted against the building and safety side.
And with regard to building and safety, has there been a greater reduction in staff necessary in the North County than the South? Or is that the way the department's organized? Is it just in terms of?
The reductions were greater in the South than they were in the North, but it's because of the way they were staffing. It's not necessarily because of the activity, but because of the way that we were staffing. So, the, out of the 10 eliminations, there were more of them that were in the South than the North. But there was some impact in the North also.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. That brings us to our standard agenda. The first matter is the Nissich Recorded Map Modification. We'll give staff just about five minutes to set up for that, and we'll be ready to First item is the Nissich Recorded Map Modification. Ms. Oplin, will you please read that item into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Martha, I'm sorry, Dacus, agent for the owner, Tony Nissich, to consider case number 07 RMM-2, application filed January 9th, 2007, to modify, to modify the development envelope on parcel 4, and to accept 98 ND-52 as adequate environmental review for case number 07 RMM-2 pursuant to Section 15162 of the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
All right. Commissioners, did we have a site visits or communications? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a great tour by the Nissich, who walked me around the site and told me what was going on. So, I just want to acknowledge that I appreciate the interruption that they had during that day with my visit. Thank you.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I visited the site, but I couldn't get in. Sorry.
And I visited the site. I did get in, thanks to a very helpful attendant, and later on spoke with Terry Moss Nissich, not so much about the project, but just how I got in. So, I think we're ready to go. Good morning, Mr. Briggs.
Good morning, Chairman Cooney, members of the Commission. My name is Aaron Briggs, and today I'll quickly walk you through the Nissich Recorded Map Modification. The project site is located near the intersection of Patterson Road and Cathedral Oaks in the Galita Community Plan area. Its address is 5215 Cathedral Oaks. It's a, it's a little over a one-acre lot. The zoning is 1E1. The lot was created in 1999 by the Koopmans Lot Split, and that was parcel map 14480. What the Nissiches are requesting is to modify the size of their recorded building envelope, and I apologize for the blurry picture here, but basically, the blue line outlines the existing development envelope, and that envelope is intended to contain development and also ground disturbances, so grading and, and things for construction preparation. And the red line shows the proposed envelope. And the purpose of increasing the envelope is to develop a new pool, spa, and related hardscape surrounding the pool. The project itself is very straightforward, but there are a number of issues that came up, questions from Commissioners and members of the public, that I just wanted to briefly cover. Number one, environmental review. For this project, we are relying on a SEQA exemption, 15162, and that exemption allows us to use a previously adopted negative declaration. So, when the Koopmans Lot Split was approved back in 1999, NEGDEC was drafted at that time, and the Planning Commission approved that negative declaration. Now, because environmental impacts from this project are, have not increased or any new impacts over the previous environmental review, it allows us to use that ND for this project as well. I got a question from, I believe it was a Commissioner, on what would happen to the pool water once the pool is built and they needed to drain the water out of the pool. This has kind of been a hot topic on our division recently. And what I did was I called the Galita Sanitary District, the property utilizes Galita Sanitary District. And their staff told me that it's not the chemicals in the pool that concern them, it's the volume of wastewater that'd be, you know, dumped into the system if someone were to drain a pool. And the staff member suggested that people can drain their pools into the sanitary district, but they don't want them just randomly dumping their, their pool water. They want to be contacted first, so that they can direct the applicant to do it overnight when they have lower flows, or do it a special time that's good for them. So, what I've done is I've prepared a condition if the Commission would like to add it to the project. I've prepared a condition that directs the applicant to either have the wastewater pumped out by a septic pumper, or to contact the Galita Sanitary District prior to doing anything like that. Underground utilities. Mrs. Koopmans, the owner of the original lot, had contacted me last week and was concerned that some existing underground water and gas lines would be covered up by some of the hardscape as part of the project. So, she came in and we sat down and looked at the plans, and after looking at the plans, I not completely assured her, but almost completely assured her, that none of the improvements would be within the Galita Water District easement, and therefore would not cover any of the utility lines. So, if something did happen to one of those lines, the Nissiches wouldn't have to, you know, dig through hardscape or stonework that they had put around the pool in order to get to those utilities. And then, lastly, oak trees. I circulated a little diagram of where we're going to be planting oak trees as part of this project. And the thought here, and for those of you who've visited the site, you may have noticed that a number of oak trees were required to be planted as part of the Koopmans Lot Split. Some of those oak trees are doing very well after about seven years in the ground, and others are not doing so well. And the ones that are not doing so well have kind of retained their original size, you know? After seven years, they haven't grown much at all. So, what the Nissiches would like to do is just replace three of the existing oak trees that are not doing well with four brand-new 36-inch box oak trees. And they, and you can see the location of those on your diagram.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing five circles.
The one circle here in the, the bottom center is an existing tree, and I just wanted to show you that. That one is not being replaced. That one's doing very well, very healthy. I just wanted to show you the location of that one. And then the four larger circles are the ones that are being replaced. As condition, the project would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the Galita Community Plan, would also be consistent with the subdivision regulations and the Land Use Development Code zoning requirements. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the required findings, including the SEQA findings, accept the previously approved negative declaration, 98 ND-52, and to approve the project, case number 07 RMM number 2, subject to the conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Questions? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Having visited the site, I was impressed in, in multiple ways by the topography and the opportunities that the Nissiches are going to take to landscape it. But what also concerned me was something about stormwater runoff from adjacent properties onto their property. And I understand they're going to be doing a retaining wall, but how, there was nothing in the previous ND that spoke about stormwater runoff or any of those issues which we now look at today. And so, there's two questions. Is about the stormwater runoff from adjacent properties onto theirs, and also because they're increasing hardscape on their property, meaning there's not going to be, there'd be less permeable surfaces in order to absorb that water. Perhaps you can describe where stormr, stormwater runoff will go? I mean, I've seen the ditch, and perhaps you can explain that, since you haven't done that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, drainage and stormwater runoff was a strong consideration that they took into, that they did consider when developing this project. And I met with Martha out on the site, the agent, and she showed me the existing drainage system, and then she also explained some of the improvements that they were going to make. And at the rear of the property, very near that full circle at the bottom there, is an existing drainage system which accepts water from parcels up above. And they know the importance of that system, and the, correct me if I'm wrong, please. The existing drainage system would remain. They would take some water off of They would take some water off of -- I'm twisting around here. I think it's the east side, no, the west side of the property, and take it out to the front. And then, the flood control district did place a condition on the project requiring their division to review prior to recordation. And they were also required to maintain an overland escape so that if that system did back up and water did flow over, that it wouldn't flood the house, that it would take a route around the house. So those have all been taken into consideration.
Mr. Briggs, could you just point out the existence of the -- or the location of the utility easement in relation to the driveway? The -- I'm looking for the location of the utility easement. The letter from Mrs. Koopmans indicated that she was concerned about the gas and water pipes.
Again, this is a little blurry, but we have Cathedral Oaks Road out here. The utilities come off the road, and they go underneath the existing driveway, as far as I understand it. And then, at certain point, they come off the driveway into the Nisic property, and there is a 20-foot easement in the back here, and it runs along the back, and you can see the red line. The property line is actually 20 feet behind the red line, and the development envelope has not been extended into that easement. It actually runs right along the boundary of the easement there to maintain open space in that easement.
Okay, then, what I was looking at was the oak tree diagram. I just wanted to make sure that the oak trees being planned weren't in the easement as well, as they might affect the pipes, but what it looks like is that the easement may be to the west and south of those trees.
That's correct. This shot here doesn't show the easements very clearly, but again, it's down below where those oak trees are. And again, it's underneath the driveway. It's in the -- and the oak trees would be planted on their property, so I don't believe there's any conflicts there.
No, I wasn't worried about the driveway side, but above it there. So maybe we can get some clarification from the applicant when we get to that. Anything else, Commissioner Blau?
That other map was difficult to read, but I think that tree right there is exactly in the easement. Isn't the easement 20 feet along this property line right here?
You know, we could ask the agent to step up and clarify that for us.
Is the property line back here? Okay, then it's okay, yeah.
I think we're just dealing with two different maps here, and we're not clear on the lines. Anything else initially of staff? All right, then let's turn to the applicant. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing us. Commissioners, the easement on the -- along the --
Could you just identify yourself for the record?
I'm Martha DeGasis with Arcadia Studio, the agent. The easement that you were concerned about with proximity to the oak trees along the driveway is a 10-foot wide easement from that area. If indeed that one oak tree is within the easement, it's certainly no issue to locate it further to the east, and we will be calling DIG Alert to locate all those utilities before we commence any kind of construction in that area. So we will be clear of all those lines and easements when we do the planting.
Okay, I think that's the important thing, is that we just want to make sure that we have no problem with the oak trees, just want to make sure the easement is not impacted.
Thank you.
Anything else from the applicant's standpoint that you wanted to present, Ms. DeGasis?
I don't think we have anything else in particular. I just wanted to say a little something about the existing oak tree and the protection measures that we intend to provide for that large existing oak tree, which is the --
Could we get a pointer for Ms. DeGasis?
The fatter circle there at the -- to the south. So we will be fencing and protecting that tree. We will be correcting some of the grades that we feel have been incorrectly placed during the initial development. So we'll be clearing away from the trunk somewhat and swaling away from that tree trunk so that we will provide drainage past it. There is a catch basin that's existing, a rather substantial one, that Mr. Briggs discussed that takes the flow from the adjacent properties. So we do need to grade toward that catch basin, which is at the base of the proposed patio. We are protecting that structure, and we will provide the overland escape to the east of the house so that we continue that drainage. What we're doing is trying to enhance the aesthetic of the property by removing a very unsightly concrete drainage swale on the east side of the house, but we will be swaling the earth in order to provide that overland escape. Additionally, there's a subterranean drain line that parallels the house on the east that will be protected, and that conducts the water over into a existing concrete structure along Cathedral Oaks that will remain in place.
Commissioner Brown, a question?
Yeah, thank you. Just a clarification on that, the concrete drainage ditch or swale that's in -- did I understand you correctly that that's going to be removed? I'd understood that it was going to remain.
The concrete ditch or drainage structure along Cathedral Oaks will remain in place. The one on the east side of the house, we are proposing to remove and replace with just landscaping. It's not an attractive feature.
But does it serve a function now that will be reduced, should you remove that?
I don't -- I have not been on-site during historic rainfalls, but it is my understanding that most of that water is conducted underground from that large catch basin. We will, as I said, be grading that to provide that overland escape and create a permeable area that that water can flow.
So it'll be more like a little swale?
Correct.
Okay, fine. All right, thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. DeGasis? Anything else you wanted to add? I didn't want to cut you off. We had those focused issues, but you may have other matters.
I don't think anything has come up that I need to provide clarification on. I think that it's been very well presented, and I don't feel that we have too many issues. We just want to enhance the rear yard, and the building envelope was so tight to the house that it didn't give us an opportunity.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. DeGasis. Do we have any speaker slips? Mr. Nisic, did you want to add anything to -- no. Okay. Then it comes back to staff. I would just observe, Mr. Briggs, that in overview, it appears that if the building envelope, the development envelope, had been large enough to include these items, this wouldn't even be a matter before the commission, that the negative declaration, the environmental review, was adequate to cover this as if it had been included. So we're really doing a housekeeping item here and making sure it's done right. Is that essentially our project?
Chairman, yeah, you're correct.
Anything to add in terms of either the drainage or utility issues?
No, but it's my opinion that they've taken great care to study the existing conditions and to main -- I mean, they've really paid a lot of attention to detail on this project. They've done a great job.
Commissioner Brown, how about the additional condition with regard to
The pool.
The chemicals in the pool, the draining of the pool, and notice to the sanitary district?
Well, you know, it's been my concern as I walk around my neighborhood, where I see drains coming from people's yards into the gutters. Now, I don't know whether that's for the pool, or for the deck, or for what it is, but as I look here, and I guess my concern here was that there's this little drainage ditch on adjacent to Cathedral Oaks, and that if the homeowner were to place all the pool water, when he drains it into that, I don't think that it could accommodate all that water, and I'm not sure where it goes. I don't have an understanding of it. I don't know where it terminates, where it originates. I don't see it, and I -- there may be issues for me that are sort of above and beyond all of that, that are in the staff report. So it would be my preference that the homeowner would empty it into the sewer rather than do it overland. I don't know where homeowners do it today in projects. I have no idea. Just considering the topography and having it, I guess there would be a drain installed from the pool to the drainage ditch along Cathedral Oaks. It seems like it'd be easier just to do it into the sewer, but I don't have any -- that's why I asked the question.
Mr. Briggs?
Just to add a little information here, if a property were to drain their pool into the storm drain system, obviously that would run along channelized, unchanneled creeks, and then eventually end up in the ocean. And we don't want chlorine and other strong chemicals entering the ocean. So putting it into the storm drain system would be probably the worst idea. The staff at Goleta Sanitary had also suggested to me that they neutralize the chlorine and then use it for irrigation and their landscaping, which I don't believe either, because that would create salts, and I think that would burn their landscaping. So after talking with the district staff, I believe the best option would be to either have it pumped out by a pump truck, or to contact the district and ask them when a good time to drain it into the sanitary district would be.
Into the sewer system, you mean?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. How often do these swimming pools get drained? Is it once every six months?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, I have no idea, but if you think about what the cost of water is these days and how big these pools are, you don't want to be draining your pool very often.
So maybe we could -- maybe the applicant could tell us when -- how -- what the frequency would be.
Thank you. Generally, it's my understanding that people drain their pools when they have to replaster them, so it's anywhere from six to 10 years. It's not a common.
So it's -- okay, so we're not going to be doing this every three months or every six months?
No.
Or once a year?
No.
Maybe every two or three years or something, if something falls in there.
At the very most, first, yeah, if there was some intrusion.
So it sounds to me like we don't have any major problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to see the language of the proposed condition?
Has Mr. Briggs not included it? Yeah.
I have it here. I'll show you.
If it's acceptable for thee.
I'll read it into the record also. It states, "Pool and spa drainage shall not be discharged into the storm drains. All wastewater discharges from pool cleaning and any filter backwash shall be disposed of by a licensed wastewater hauler or by specific approval by the Goleta Sanitary District."
Okay.
I don't have any problems with that, but let me ask the applicant if he has none. Okay. He's indicating he has no problem.
Okay.
This is a condition that we've placed on other projects.
It's a rare swimming pool that we have a chance to add a condition to, but perhaps we ought to be looking at this as more broad policy in terms of even our building permit approval process. All right, any other discussion? Anything you would like to do before we proceed to deliberations, Commissioner Brown? All right, then let's indicate our preference for Commissioner Brown, and then we can have a motion on this project. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I don't have any problem with this project. I recall when we were dealing with this area about six or seven years ago, and drainage was a big concern because of the trees that were the watering for the, I think, orange trees or lemon trees, I don't know what it is, in front there. But we didn't have a major problem with it, and I still don't have a problem with it. So I'm prepared to support Commissioner Brown.
Commissioner Blau, any comment?
I'm prepared to approve.
And I agree, Commissioner Brown, that the project should be supported. I imagine that the location, the tight location of the original building development envelope had to do with this drainage issue, and I'm satisfied the applicant is addressing it so that in the event of a cataclysmic water drainage issue from above, the water will get to the street, not to the house. So I'll support the project as well.
Okay. Well, thank you. I have just a couple of comments, and I want to echo Mr. Briggs' comment, that I think the applicant is taking great care of this property with this project and correcting some ills that were either allowed during the last, when the house was built, in terms of some of the grading around that oak tree. I appreciate the stewardship and their interest in preserving this tree, which I think is a really significant asset to this property, as well as the addition of the other oak trees. So with that, I would like to accept or recommend that we approve staff's recommendations with the added condition.
And I'll second.
Any further discussion from the commission? We're ready for the roll call. Ms. Opel?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Vote carries 4-0.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we'll just take a brief break to allow staff to set up for item number two, which is the Firefox Sandstone Appeal. Santa Barbara County Planning Commission meeting of the 24th of October. Item number two on our agenda is the Firefox Sandstone Carving Project. Ms. Opel, will you please read that into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Kathleen Weinheimer, attorney for owner Eddie Langhorn, to consider the appeal, case number 07 APL28, appeal filed on September 7th, 2007, of the director's decision to deny land use permit number 07 LUP301.
Did we have any site visits on this project? Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I did go. I got as far as the gate. It was locked, but I was told that the gate would be locked on this. I made arrangements, but the dog greeted me, so.
Nice dog.
I got a look from the gate, and it is a very nice-looking area.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, thank you. I had a site visit with Mr. Langhorn, Ms. Weinheimer, and Ms. Souter yesterday. We walked around the site, and based upon my questions, Mr. Langhorn took me over to another one of his sites where he does some of the actual carving of stones, this is in the city of Goleta, which helped me to understand what his project was. So I think it was very good, and I really appreciate their taking the time to do the extra piece. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. I had a chance to get to the front gate. Because I was in the area, I didn't have a chance for advance notice to the applicant. However, I did speak with their agent, Ms. Suter, subsequently, and had several questions about the project, which are covered in the staff report. So with that --
I also did a site. I did a site, that's right.
Any ex parte communications? No. Okay. Good morning, Ms. Gibbs.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, commissioners. The proposed project is a 9.38 acre parcel located off of Equil, which is off of Patterson Avenue, as you all know now. It's located in the south Patterson Ag Block, which consists of this area here, and it's really one of the last remaining contiguous agricultural areas in Goleta. There's prime agricultural land located on the very tip, northern tip of this parcel, and then farmland of statewide importance over the remainder of the parcel. There is currently a nursery and landscaping business operating on the parcel. It's zoned Ag 110, and it's urban and in the inland area. The proposed project is fundamentally to produce and sell sandstone carvings, benches, fountains, and other garden accessories. The proposed project is to construct three new buildings on the site. One would be for rock cutting and finishing, and it would be 3,000 square feet. One would be rock splitting for 1,200 -- square feet. One would be rock splitting for 1,250 square feet. Another building would be used to store a forklift and other heavy equipment. The project also entails 10,100 square feet of staging area for rock. Rock would be imported from various areas throughout the county and would be cut and finished within, with these two buildings. It requires approximately 500 gallons of water to cut the rock. The buildings would house hand saws that would be used to cut the rock. There would be, water would be used to process the rock and then would also, would be discharged into a reclamation basin and recycled for use on a daily basis. The project description is exactly as was written by the applicant at the beginning of the, of the, when the application was submitted and it had not changed throughout the, while processing this application. So just to show you a close-up of the site plans, and luckily the applicant did bring a blow up, so you can see where, how much of this operation would cover of the entire parcel. But the three new buildings would be located here. The proposed new staging areas would be located in these areas. There are existing equipment, storage, and office storage buildings over here. There's also, there is an existing land use permit issued for the property where the owner is allowed to stockpile rock to use for his landscaping business. And let me back up a little bit. His landscaping business, he imports mature trees that are removed from construction sites. And the rock that he has currently stockpiled onsite now is used to support those trees and mounds of soil so that he can keep them alive and then resell them back out to the public. Sorry. We looked at this project from three different angles. We really tried to sincerely look and see whether we could permit this application. We looked at three things, three approved uses that are approved in the Ag 110 Zone District. We looked at whether the project could be considered agricultural processing, whether the accessory structures are customarily incidental to the ag operation, or whether the operation would be considered mining, coring, or extraction of rock. And I'll go through our rationale for each of these three approved uses. The first, the first thing that's allowed in the Ag 110 Zone District is agricultural processing. It's actually, in the Ag 1 Zone District, only agricultural processing of off, of on-premise products is allowed. So that's one important thing to note. But nevertheless, we couldn't even consider it agricultural processing because agricultural processing, according to our Land Use Development Code, involves processing of agricultural products, which are defined as natural products such as food and fiber, growing of plants, raising and keeping of animals, and aquaculture. So we felt that it was not appropriate to consider processing of rock as agricultural processing. Second, we felt that it was not customarily incidental to process and manufacture rock in the Ag 1 Zone District. It is not a necessary and integral part of maintaining the on-premise product or the trees. However, the sale of these materials is allowed. The ordinance does allow an applicant to sell incidental landscaping materials such as the proposed fountains, benches, and carvings that are proposed in the project description. So that's an alternative that the applicant is offering. I'll go into those alternatives later. Finally, we considered that the proposed project is not considered, cannot be considered mining, coring, or extraction of rock because that involves mining, extraction, pulling rock from onsite and extracting it from a pit or a mine that would be located onsite. Instead, this project is pulling rock from elsewhere and actually creating items that are for sale on the parcel. So it's not considered mining and coring from our perspective. I think the most fundamental rationale for our denial is that this proposed project is exactly, is exactly appropriate for an industrial zoned parcel. Under the Land Use Development Code, processing and manufacturing of stone-cut products is called out as an approved use in the M1 or M2 Zone Districts. And so we felt that this project in its entirety is more appropriate in an industrial zoned parcel. The comp plan also supports this finding. And so that's our strongest rationale for our decision on this project. There are some alternatives to the applicant that we've tried to encourage over time. One is that the applicant can definitely maintain the stockpile that they, that he currently has. He's allowed to have between 12 to 28 inch diameter rocks onsite that he can use to maintain his trees. So that, that continues. And as long as there are no zoning violations associated with the stockpile, he can continue that use. He can sell sandstone garden accessories in a 300 square foot area on the property. And he can continue, one of the, he can construct one of the buildings that he's proposing to store equipment that he can use onsite, forklifts and heavy equipment. So all of those three things are appropriate on this parcel. So our recommendations today are to adopt the required findings for denial of the project, to deny the appeal and deny the project. Be happy to answer any questions. There's a lot of background research we did into this and...
Do you have a question?
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. The first is from Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I have a question. On Ag 1, can we have landscaping businesses in that Ag 1?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, yes, landscaping businesses are allowed on Ag 1.
And is there a limit to how much, how many, what the parameters are for all, for plants, for rocks, for trees, for soil mixture and all that? Is there a parameter that says you can only have so much?
Commissioner Valencia, no, there's no restrictions on how many plants you can have out there, how much other accessories you can use to grow your plants, such as the rock. But there is a restriction on how many, how much area you can dedicate to sale of incidental materials such as fountains and benches and such.
I see. Okay. Okay. It's not a challenge. I'm just trying to find out. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Brown?
Having been on the site and just from Commissioner Valencia's questions, not that the applicant does this, but just to give me a better understanding about the Ag 1 Zone District, you had indicated that, or the staff report, that he can only have, store so many tons or so many square feet or whatever, so many, the rock pile's only allowed to go to such a height. So it's a proportion of the ag, the ag products to sort of the incidental products. Is that, I mean, where, how do you determine that?
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, the real issue here with this project is the manufacturing and processing of the rock. That's, that's fundamentally the problem that we're having and why we're finding this inappropriate. So...
Yeah, I understand that. But my question is, if you look at that field, the map that's on the wall, and you see that big area to the left of the paper, which is a vacant area, could he store rock there? That would exceed the amount of tonnage or square footage or whatever the parameter that you use for his land use permit. So there is some, there is some dividing line of how you just determine the landscape or the nursery business versus the sort of the rock business, if you will.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, the primary use must be landscaping, of course. However, as we did, when we looked at the original permit for stockpiling rock, we did look and make sure that the size of the, that the size of the stockpile was, you know, secondary to the landscaping business and of course evaluated it compared, relative to our policies to make sure it wasn't, you know, it wasn't violating any policies out there regarding, you know, noise or, I mean, the impacts of stockpiling are not that great, but...
With regard to the rock storage, there's an existing land use permit that restricts the square footage of the area and also the tonnage of the stones. Are those both based on, on the zoning? Or are those in addition to zoning requirements? In other words, if I have an agricultural operation, how much stone am I allowed to stockpile onsite, forgetting the manufacturing question for the moment?
Mr. Chair, there are no restrictions on the size of the, of the stockpile area in ordinance. There's no, there are no development standards restricting that. So we solely looked at that from the perspective of, first, we wanted to make sure it was secondary to the landscaping business. And second, wanted to make sure that it wasn't so large that it was having impacts or violating policies. So that's, those are the types of things that we would look at. Let's say if you wanted to change the size of the, of the stockpile.
Okay. And then the second question relates to the overall application. As I understand the posture, this is an appeal from the denial of a land use permit. So we're, as, as we've been advised numerous occasions by county council, our position is essentially that of a member of the counterstaff issuing a land use permit. And this applicant comes in and we say, "You cannot do certain of the activities for which you've applied, but you, you can build an additional building and we could issue a building permit or a land use permit to allow the construction of an equipment storage building." So are we in a position to do that today? In other words, is one of our options to deny the project in part and to grant the permit in part with regard to this storage building? Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, I think that that's certainly an option before the Commission.
Because certain parts of the application, it seems to me, clearly are permitted and others are in doubt.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions before we go to the appellant? All right. Let's turn to Ms. Weinheimer then. I mean, Ms. Suter.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Cindy Souter and I'm the agent for Firefox Nursery, working with Kathleen Weinheimer on this project. I think what I'm going to do first is get the pointer for one. I'm going to walk you through the existing agricultural operation onsite, since I know most of you just were able to do drive-by site visits, which means you saw basically the gate and then the front building right here, which didn't really tell you a lot about his innovative nursery that he has onsite. Michelle touched on it earlier. The primary function of this nursery is Mr. Langhorn gets trees that are, basically you could think of them as rescue trees, from construction sites, you know, Bakersfield around the county as well, but mostly out of our county where they just do a tract development and clear everything and start over from scratch. So he gets these trees and he also gets some stone from these construction projects and he brings them here. Now, those trees are from areas that are not quite as, they're more arid than we are, even though we're sort of in arid climate as well. And there's also groundwater issues on his property. So he elevates the roots of the trees, and you can put the first picture now. He takes the trees during transport and he, you know, takes their root ball and then he places it above ground instead of digging a hole to plant the tree on the nursery. He keeps it above ground and that allows the trees to acclimate to our climate while they're waiting to be sold for, to go to somebody's property for a landscaping project. So that's what a tree mound with just dirt is. And I also have hard copies of the photos. If you Commissioners would like more detailed ones to pass around, let me know if you do because I, I see these aren't looking as clear as I'd like them to. Here's a picture of one of the tree mounds that has the stone placed around it. And the purpose of the stone around the base of the tree is A, to hold the soil in place, and then B, also the stone, you know, picks up heat from the sun during the day, so it helps keep the roots warmer, which helps the trees to adapt better to our climate. This is another example. This is a palm tree with the stone well around it. And this is a series of palm trees. That one didn't turn out very well in the overhead. Here's another example. Now, this is one that's been taken from the nursery to a site and actually installed with a more natural-looking tree well, the stone well around the base of the tree. And here's one with still natural-looking, but just the stones are more tightly, tightly packed together. That's another finished product there. I think you could stop right now. What's the next picture? Yeah, you can stop. So as you can see, that the stones out there and the rocks onsite are imperative to his existing agricultural operation. And what did I do with that pointer? The main nursery area where the trees are is in this area right here that I'm outlining for you. This area back here is an expansion area. Right now, it's just a big grass field. And then also for sale, kind of dual purpose for sale and for agriculture, are, there's a lot of trees here around the perimeter that if a client wanted to purchase one of those, he would sell it. But he also uses them kind of for screening for the rest of the nursery. There is a, the existing stockpile that Michelle was talking about earlier is right here in this big brown area. And that's allowed to take up to 20,000 square feet and have 800 tons of rock. And just for mental purposes, a rock about this big is a ton. So you could kind of think tons and cubic yards is the same, just for visualizing the amount of rock that he is allowed to store there because he uses it a lot in his operation. The new part of the project and the project description is, I mean, the wording is correct in the project description. But there are, it's the tone of the project description, it sounds like that all the rocks that are going to be cut on the property are going to be solely for benches, fountains, and those sort of things. And that's actually not true. 80% of the rocks onsite are used for the trees and only 20% of the rocks onsite would be formed into these fountains and very rough fountains and benches and things like that. So I think that's important because that doesn't really come clear in the project description when you read it, although the words are there that say those things. The proposed, three new proposed buildings for the rock cutting operation are these purple ones right here. And this building right here on the left, I had enough coffee this morning, you can tell, is the rock splitting building. And that's where they would take the large rocks and split them, just to make them into smaller pieces. Then in this, the longer rectangular shaped building at the top would be where the saws and things would be housed that would further shape the rocks into what they were supposed to, you know, where there was going to be a bench or steps or whatever. And then this building over here, the little one on the left, is the equipment storage building. And this area over here, down below, these are where the bins for rock sorting would be. And that's where rocks of different sizes and shapes would be stored to create the wells that go around the trees here because obviously different sized trees are going to need different sizes of rock to fit together to make the well for that tree. And then these little ones up here, the scraps, or tailings, whatever you want to call it, the little bits left over from the rock cutting operation, would go here into a rock crusher and be ground down small enough to become soil amendments. And not quite as fine as beach sand, but less coarse than gravel is a good way to think of what would happen there. So, you know, the rocks, all the parts of the rocks are pretty good, get used up onsite somehow. Let's go back to the pictures for a second. Okay. And the, the types of rock carving, or it's not really carving, it's more cutting, that would occur in, on the property would be very rough cutting. See, this is, you know, it's not polished down, it's not shiny, it's just very rough... See, this is, you know, it's not polished down, it's not shiny, it's just very rough rockstone cut. Here's another example of a bench. You can see this very simple rough cut, and it's supported at each end by two boulders, and then in the center by another boulder. Here's some steps. As you can see, they're very rough, roughly cut rocks. They look very natural, but yet they were formed in order to create those steps. Here again, another example of natural steps. You know, the rocks look very natural, they aren't polished or shiny or intricate details carved into them or anything, but yet they are functioning as steps. And here's an example of one of his equipment on site lifting up a rock. The rocks are very large, and you see the guy in the background for perspective, and they do need chains to be lifted. These are very heavy rocks, so they do need, you know, tall buildings to be able to lift the crane up and move these things around in a safe manner for the workers to be around them. And then here's an example of a stone that's been split open. And you can see, it's just a very rough-looking, it's, you know, nothing fancy, nothing polished, no carved details or anything like that. It's just very rough carving. And this is the type of activity that would occur in these buildings on site for the 20% of the stone that would actually go through. He does have another property in Santa Barbara where he has the tools and equipment to do the fine detailing and the fine carving, and the, you know, the very fine work if it was to be something more ornate. And those types of activities would not be occurring on this site. Maybe something would be split and then shipped into Santa Barbara to be further refined. But the rough benches and fountains, well, you didn't see any fountains, because the fountains aren't so, so, they're not rough. But the examples, the steps and things that I showed you today, those are the types of things that would be produced here out of that 20% of the rock on site. So this, the stone, you can see, is imperative to his agricultural operation on site, and, you know, cutting of the stone is very much incidental to the existing nursery and landscaping business on site. And I'll turn it over to Kathleen now.
Before you do, Commissioner Brown has a quick question.
Thank you. Would you go back to the previous slide, please? Let's see. So this, what I'm trying to get here is, in your current land use permit, you're allowed, the applicant is, is allowed to have rocks that are, the language is, "Stone shall be limited in size between 12 and 28 inches in diameter." Seems to me that those rocks are bigger than 28 inches in diameter.
Commissioner Brown, you are correct, because that picture was taken at the Kellogg site that we went over to yesterday.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I just brought that for an example of the size of rocks.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, my name is Kathleen Weinheimer, the attorney for Mr. Langhorn. I wanted to begin by thanking you for the opportunity to be here today, because it's been more than five years since we filed this application. We've been through five planners, and this is our first opportunity to actually make a presentation to a decision-making body. There's been, as you've heard, a lot of confusion about what's actually involved in this process. Part of that has arisen from the direction that we've received from prior members of the planning staff. We were first directed to apply for a conditional use permit, because as Ms. Gibbs mentioned in her staff report, quarrying operations are allowed with a major conditional use permit in the Ag One Zone. Staff at that time thought that this was the appropriate and most reasonable position for them to take, and directed that we make that application. The original project description was developed with that in mind. A change in staff led us to a direction to file for a rezoning. Another change in staff suggested that we might be better off seeking annexation to the city of Galita. Yet another planner came along and thought an agricultural viability study was the way to go, and that perhaps this wasn't even an appropriate site for an agricultural designation. The best we know, the agricultural viability study, although we waited two years for it, was never completed. Most recently, we were directed to file for a development plan, which would have brought us to your commission. The size limitations were different, though, and so we were directed to reduce that application to a land use permit. Again, all of which happened without the opportunity for a hearing. One of the reasons why I think a hearing is most important in this application is that this is such a unique situation. This isn't a nursery like Los Amida. It isn't a standard agricultural application of row crops or something like that. As Ms. Sauter said, this is a, an operation that takes recycled trees, if you will, that would otherwise be destroyed, and uses those trees, dirt, and rocks for placement in some of the most prominent locations in Santa Barbara. Included in the packet of materials that I provided to you were copies of letters from some of the clients that have made use of this, this function of Mr. Langhorn's. They include the Botanic Gardens, Lotus Land, Crane School, UCSB. You'll note that the letters all dated from, from 2002, which was when we thought we were going to first get to the planning commission. Despite their, their somewhat dated appearance, they are still all very supportive of our project and hope that we can get the approval that we're seeking today. As Ms. Sauter said, the, the trees which are involved here would otherwise be destroyed, the dirt and rocks which are included here would otherwise be placed in landfills. The plants that are contained in the tree surrounds go with their surrounds to their new locations. The rocks, of course, being natural products, come in various sizes. I think that led to part of the confusion that was referenced in the staff report regarding the stone carving operation. Everything from the footnote in the staff report that alleged that I had failed to disclose that this was an application for a stone carving, which I find simply outrageous, and having been at this for almost six years and things entitled "stone carving operation," I don't know how, there could be any doubt about what we were asking for. But moreover, to the impression made by the staff report that, again, Ms. Sauter alluded to, that somehow this was a manufacturing operation plunked down in the middle of an agricultural zone. Nothing could be further from the truth. This is indeed an incidental operation to an existing and permitted agricultural operation. A number of years ago, Mr. Langhorn was granted a permit for the rock and dirt storage at his nursery. As you know, a permit which allows up to 800 tons of rock on the site. That's a considerable amount of rock. Mr. Langhorn originally intended to consolidate all his operations at the Equel location. The lengthy time involved in this permit process, though, has caused him to seek other locations, one of which was referenced in the pictures that you saw, and includes rental property in the city of Galita, and the other of which involves a newly constructed building for the finished operations in the city of Santa Barbara. What remains is the desire to move the Kellogg operation back to Equel. This is an operation that takes the rocks that exceed the site, pardon me, exceed the size that is permitted under the existing land use permit, and allow him to do rough cutting of those rocks, so that then they may be included in the kinds of applications Ms. Sauter presented. Either the rough-hewn and unfinished, if you will, stairs, rock surrounds, and benches, or transported to the Santa Barbara location for finishing work to be carved and polished and the like. Again, this is only a small portion of the rocks on site. It is not the kind of thing that will suddenly turn into a manufacturing operation and take over the entire 10-acre location. Mr. Langhorn is committed to the furtherance of his nursery and had, has no reason to pursue this, other than to enhance his nursery operation. I'd like to turn for a moment to the zoning ordinance, which, as you know, permits the sale of incidental gardening and landscaping materials in connection with an approved nursery use in the Ag One Zone. We could not find any supporting data in the staff report that enhances their conclusion that the sale of rocks, in whatever form, is any different from the sale of bark, mulch, or other products that one finds in a standard nursery. We recognize that this is an unusual use, but we do think that with proper limitations, such as those contained in the existing land use permit as to the number and volume of rocks on site, that it can be assured to remain a secondary use. The findings contained in the staff report supporting the denial of the application, however, we don't believe are supported. The list of agricultural processing activities permitted in the Ag One Ten Zone is by its own terms intended as a list of examples only. It is not all-inclusive. Similarly, the definition of agriculture specifically allows the sale of products which are accessory and customarily incidental to the marketing of products in their natural form. In this case, 80% of the rocks which are already permitted on the site are integral to the sale of the trees and would be untouched in their natural form. To argue that when the remaining rocks are shaped into another form, whether simply cut to fit another landscape application or formed into a size for finishing as another garden accoutrement, the character of the end product is no longer incidental to the nursery operation is simply unfounded. We think it's important, too, to look at the, the goals and intent of the agricultural zoning ordinance and the land use element when making your decision. County has gone to great lengths to support agriculture as a viable land use, particularly in relatively urban settings such as this. I believe Ms. Gibbs started her staff report with saying this is one of the last uninterrupted blocks of agricultural in an urban setting. We would hope that your commission would look to ways to allow those kinds of agricultural operations to continue. Certainly, there are a host of examples where there are less traditional forms of agriculture other than merely open row crops or orchards in this very region. When you look at the number of greenhouses nearby, many of the greenhouse applications are really quite industrial in their nature, and, again, are incidental and supportive of the underlying agricultural zone and the agricultural use. Here we have a location where traditional in-ground agriculture has failed because of the high water table. The use that Mr. Langhorn has put to this property has allowed the agricultural designation to continue and to indeed prosper through this unique combination of above-ground rescue trees and the supplemental rock surrounds. Finally, staff concludes by stating that this application is contrary to the purpose and intent of the land use designations for agricultural contained in the land use element of the comprehensive plan, citing a provision regarding the preparation or marketing of products in their natural form. I think it could be argued that rocks are rocks are rocks, and if one rock is split, I don't know that it becomes unnatural. I would also point to the supporting definitions of accessory agricultural structures and accessory uses contained in the zoning ordinance that clearly speak to and anticipate these kinds of accessory structures and accessory uses being necessary and fundamental to successful agricultural operations. In closing, I would ask you to think carefully about the fact that this is a successful agricultural operation, and it's being conducted by a man who's been more than patient for more than five years. He's attempted to meet every regulation that the staff has put forward. He's applied for every permit that they have possibly construed. He's asking for your approval today. I thank you very much.
Questions of Ms. Weinheimer?
I do have one. Ms. Weinheimer, just in terms of the applicant, you, you've cited the history of this project, and I've tried to follow that through your correspondence as well as the staff documents. And some of the letters you provided were addressed to Pat Scott Masonry. Was, was this a prior owner, or was it just a different DBA for the business?
No, they, they are one and the same. They, Pat Scott Masonry is, the parent, is, is the subsidiary of Firefox. So there are interchangeable uses through the various applications and through various correspondence that you've seen. The, the applicant and the operator of the nursery is Firefox.
And the applicant throughout this process for various permits has always been the same entity?
Has always been Mr. Langhorn.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Do we have any speaker slips?
Mr. Chair, I don't have questions, but I have a lot of comments when it gets back to it.
Okay, it's coming. We have no public speaker slips unless someone out there has not filled one out and would like the opportunity to speak on this project. It doesn't appear so. So we're coming back to you, Ms. Gibbs. Do you have any comments before the commissioners start asking questions and make comments?
Mr. Chair, before, before Ms. Gibbs does, maybe I can address an issue which I think more appropriately rests with me.
Okay.
And that is the amount of time that it took for this application to get before the planning commission. I could go through every stage of the process, but I don't think it would excuse the length of time that it has taken. And that's not Ms. Gibbs' fault. It's the fault of the Department, of staffing issues, of being, having difficulty dealing with a very unique case and trying to figure out a way to make it work. So I just didn't want your comments and, and perhaps displeasure to be focused on Ms. Gibbs in that regard. If, if you have displeasure, focus it on me, because it is my responsibility, and it's, it's not a situation that I like to see happen. It's not one that I personally was aware at, aware of early in the process, but nonetheless one that I, I am responsible for. So just wanted to let you know that. With regard to the application itself, before you, I think the issue is, is a pretty clear issue, and it's an issue for the commission to, to determine, but that is whether the processing that is proposed as part of this application is an appropriate use in the agricultural zone district. And I think it's very easy to talk about the sales and support of an agricultural operation, but what the fundamental issue is, is whether or not the rock cutting and processing is, is an appropriate use on, on this agricultural property. As you can see in the findings that we prepared supporting our action, we do not believe that it's an appropriate use. In fact, if you look at the findings, you'll see the definition of agricultural processing includes processing or preparation for shipping of agricultural products produced on site. Even if we said that the rock was an agricultural product, it isn't produced on site. The rock comes from elsewhere, and then is, is proposed to be split and shaped and then, and then sold off the site. So I just wanted to make it real clear, we're not talking about the sales, per se, in this application. It's really the manufacturing that would first propose to occur with the rock.
Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chair, just as a, as a bit of clarification, the issue isn't so much whether this is a good use or an appropriate use in the general sense on ag lands. It's a question of ordinance interpretation. It's a question of the meaning of the words in our ordinance. So you have to, you would have to find that this use, the sawing, the cutting, the crushing of rock, is a use that's, for example, customarily incidental to the primary use, that is, a nursery. And what the LUDC anticipates with nurseries as incidental would be the sale, for example, of incidental garden and landscape materials. You know, it does not address the manufacture of incidental garden and landscape materials.
Just in terms of a question, Ms. Black, this may be for you to answer, but Ms. Weinheimer mentioned at one point a rezone was suggested. Can you describe what happened to that application? I mean, obviously, isn't one of the Just in terms of a question, Ms. Black, this may be for you to answer, but Ms. Weinheimer mentioned at one point a rezone was suggested. Can you describe what happened to that application? I mean, obviously, isn't one of the options the applicant has here to seek a manufacturing designation for his property, and then this clearly would be included? Ms. Gibbs?
Mr. Chair, I can answer that question. Early on in the process, we did talk about options other than the proposed project, and one of them is, of course, to apply for a rezone and general plan amendment to an industrial use. However, we definitely came in, you know, indicating that that would likely not be supported by the department as it is ag land that we're trying to protect, and if it were to be converted, it probably would go, be converted, we would try to go for residential instead of industrial. But, you know, the odds of that would be very slim, and so we definitely warned the applicant that is an option, but it would probably not likely turn out well.
Let's go to Commissioner Blau first.
My question is, is that can you tell me what the square footage of just the processing area is, the three buildings and, you know, access to those three buildings and so forth? Could you give me those dimensions?
Commissioner Blau, it is roughly, it is less than 20,000 square feet. That was, that's the threshold for triggering a development plan, and we determined after receiving final plans that it was less than that. I don't have the number right off the top of my head.
And this site is about nine acres, which would be about 400,000 square feet of land. So we're talking about, if I do the math right, two percent?
Commissioner Blau, yes, less than five percent.
It's less than two percent, I think, actually. Yeah, okay.
Ms. Sutter, there may be a number of items that you'll want to comment on. Why don't you write them down, and we'll give you an opportunity. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. A question for Ms. Black. Appreciate your comments concerning the processing length. And I just have a question. When it appears that maybe, this isn't probably the first project, but it may be, where staff has had, has tried to help to find a way for the applicant to conduct their business, wouldn't it have been more beneficial to the department and to the applicant to do summary denial early on and just let it go to the planning commission earlier, and then there wouldn't have been this delay, the cost, the expense, the angst, and all the shroom and drawing that we see here? So perhaps you could comment on that.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, definitely. Couldn't agree more with that statement.
Commissioner Blau?
Just an item for our retreat. It seems to me that we need to have a procedure to where you can bring a question or an issue for our advice and consent. I mean, it would have been great if we'd have seen this four years ago and said, gosh, we're really not too sure how to handle this, commissioners, how do you want to handle it? What you think's the best action to take? And I think we could have, you know, cleared up the definition of the ordinance a long time ago. So it's not just, I mean, anything in the future, that's why I asked for this list of projects that are in, we have many more of these. I mean, it concerns me. So I think we need a new procedure, and the applicant needs to know that there's a procedure where if you don't agree with staff or you're having trouble processing it, that they should be able to be on the agenda and ask that question, not approving a project, but ask a question, give direction to the staff on how to proceed. So I agree with my other commissioners on that issue, and hopefully we can make this process better in the future.
Commissioner Valenci.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ag 1 in that area just doesn't seem to fit, and in a matter of time, it will not be Ag 1. It'll be something else, either be an extension of industrial, commercial, or residential, but it will not continue. Ten years from now, it'll be something so, it's just a matter of time, or it would be appropriate to do something there depending on the zoning that it goes to. And in terms of Ag 1 being only agricultural products, when you get involved in agriculture, there's a lot of welding that goes on in agriculture. I mean, I've been involved, my in-laws were tomato growers, so 1,000 acres of tomato, believe me, the welding operation is very large to the farming implements, the tractors and all the caterpillars that we used and all that type of thing. Welding was, there was a full-time welder, sharpening, sometimes he was sharpening tools, the implements, and that takes days and days to sharpen those things. Either that, or you take it to a blacksmith and have it done. So there's a lot of things that are non-agriculture, non-food, non-planting-type things that are done on there. And I think this particular thing, I mean, I know it's slightly a stretch, but I recall when, I feel that our job here many times is to make sure that people stay within the goals and bounds of, the goals and policies of the county in good zoning practices. But occasionally, we find something that probably is on the fringes, but maybe we can make an exception to the rule. We did that with Rancho del Sol. We had a fellow there who had a whole bunch of horses, and he didn't have enough surface area, but he had it at an angle, and we found a way to count all the area. And like, we found a way to help him. I think we can find a way to help Mr. Clayborne here. This landscaping, from what I saw there, from the, I just can't see how anybody would be bothered. I mean, there aren't any neighbors. The closest thing is across the street from Patterson before you see any type of business, and it's all either an industrial business of some sort. On the opposite end, on Eckwell, there are trucks that make five times the noise that he will make there. Semis, they're all parked out in a cul-de-sac there, you know. So I, you know, when I look at some of these landscape operations, you go in there, and it's not all ag. They have storage areas, they have areas where they have pallets, where they build pallets, a big operation to building pallets and building trellises, full-time, semi-skilled carpenters doing these type of things and building these large boxes for trees that are going to be transferred and so on. So I, I mean, I know it's a slight stretch, but I feel that, you know, it's really not out of place in this Ag 1. And I think I could find a way to support something like this, but I'll wait to hear the comments from my fellow commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Valenci. I promised Ms. Sutter an opportunity to comment on factual issues that we're still trying to straighten out, so let's hold our comments as to the project itself and make sure we've got all our questions answered as to what's involved here.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Before Supervisor Rose left office, did she not extend the agricultural designation to the South Patterson Ag Block for another period of time? Above and beyond what is in the current Goleta Community Plan?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, my memory's a bit foggy on this, but I believe we did in the context of the housing element policies, not in the Goleta Community Plan, per se, because we haven't touched the Goleta Community Plan. As the commissioners know, we're currently embarking on an East Goleta Community Plan update, and this will be obviously one of the areas that'll be looked at in the context of that plan. But I think the housing element, in looking at housing, affordable housing sites, did indicate that this area would continue in agriculture until at least the Goleta Community Plan were updated.
But wouldn't that same rationale to apply just to maintaining the, under the county definitions to the ag? Because from what I hear, the issue is it's about the industrialization of ag. And so I think that the intent of Supervisor Rose was that this remain in ag under whatever the definitions are under the county. That was my understanding, and it may have been about housing.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, I think that was the intent, not just of Supervisor, then Supervisor Rose, but of the Board of Supervisors in approving that housing element policy.
All right, Ms. Sutter, any factual items you wanted to address that would help us with our deliberations?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for Commissioner Blau that the total of the two smaller buildings, or 1,250 square feet each, the larger building is 3,000 square feet, so that's 5,500 square feet of new buildings to house the equipment. And then, including the gravel, or, excuse me, the paved area between the buildings, it would be 11,784 square feet. And then the parcel's 9.64 acres in size, so not a lot of it's going to be devoted.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sutter. Did you have something else, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chair, yes, I wanted to at least attempt to focus the commission's deliberations. As one concerned with the integrity of our ordinances and, you know, interpretation of those ordinances, that's where I'd urge the commission to, you know, place your thought and discussion in that regard. It's irrelevant what the percentage of, you know, a parcel is that's used for a use that is not permitted. If there's a use that is not permitted, it doesn't matter whether it's consuming, you know, one percent or ninety percent of a given premise. That's one issue. Secondly, here we are concerned with the material which is being sold to the public, which is being marketed. So to use Commissioner Valenci's example, welding and many other things go on quite legitimately on ranches and agricultural properties, but there might be an issue if one set up a welding business to construct materials for sale to the public. And then finally, again, as to the use, impacts off-site are, again, irrelevant. So I just urge that the commission, you know, look at the ordinances and determine whether this proposal fits within the words of our permissible uses.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I would strongly disagree with our counsel that the issue of the size is not an issue. If we're talking about whether or not this use is incidental to the nursery business, seems to me if it's two percent of the, or less than two percent of the ground space is being used, it becomes, it helps to define the fact that it's incidental. Although I agree and understand that we need to, you know, make our determination and not violate the ordinance. I will say that I don't, I can view this as not a manufacturing process. I mean, the analogy would be, he buys peat moss and has to deliver it in a 50-ton truck, and he takes a forklift and a processor and puts it in three-pound bags or, you know, two cubic foot bags and resells it. So he is buying, he's delivering rock in here, he is processing the rock, repackaging it for sale in the nursery business, and yes, I find it incidental. So I'm not having a problem calling this a manufacturing operation. Now, I will say that if he were doing that on the entire site, and it was 98 percent of the dirt was being used for this repackaging of the rock for sale, I could easily define that as a manufacturing thing. But I don't, when we're talking about less than two percent of the ground space being used, and we are just simply reprocessing the rock for sale, I don't think that's a manufacturing operation. We're not putting things together and building things for resale. I also tend to believe that if, when the ordinance was written, had this kind of a project been envisioned, or this kind of use been envisioned, that it would have been more clearly written so that we could easily make the determination. So I think it was the intent when it was written that this kind of a project would be allowed to go, and I'm not saying that we're, I'm not saying I want to approve this just because it's a good idea. I think we can read the ordinance and make a determination that it does fit.
Does somebody have a light on down there? I don't see it. Let's clarify one thing. I think this may be Mr. Allen, because in Ms. Gibbs', was it Ms. Gibbs' letter, staff's letter in any event, to the applicant denying the permit, this issue was focused on as follows. It basically said pursuant to Section 35.21.030E of the Land Use Development Code, each use allowed by Table 2.1 of the LUDC may include accessory structures and uses that are customarily incidental to the primary use. And then the staff goes on to conclude why that doesn't apply here. And it does so in terms of the sale of landscape materials and incidental garden materials would be okay. So staff concludes that it's not the sale here that is disregarded as incidental, but the manufacturing and sale. And I think that's the hitch we're caught in here. If we're to approve this project, it seems to me we're going to have to interpret the language of the ordinance in a way that it doesn't naturally go, and that's my concern. But, Mr. Allen, if I'm off on the analysis of the ordinance and that specific point for the rejection, please clarify and correct me.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, you are correct, and I'd note, as you read it, the word "customarily incidental" also modified, so it must be uses that are customarily incidental to the primary use, which in this instance would be a nursery and landscape business.
Commissioner Blau?
Yes, and I'm just going to take the position that we are not manufacturing rocks here. We are simply processing, like we would process other landscape materials in preparation for their use in the nursery. So I don't have a problem with this being a manufacturing operation. It's not. You know, my concept of a manufacturing operation is one where you take several component parts and you put them together, and we're not doing that. We are simply processing the landscape material, and so I'm not having a problem with that.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, not to argue, but the words are "processing and manufacturing" in the definition. It's both. Because better.
Okay, the words are "processing and manufacturing," not "processing or manufacturing."
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, the approved use is exactly stated, processing and manufacturing of stone-cut products is allowed in the M1.
I understand that, but you see, what we're talking about here is if it says "processing or manufacturing" is limited to M1 zoning, then I would agree with you. But it says you can do both in an M1 zone. Well, I think you can also process your goods for sale in the ag zone if you're a nursery. What you can't do is manufacture, so I'm going to define this cutting of the rock as a processing operation, not as one of manufacturing. So I don't think it violates the ordinance.
Commissioner Brown?
I just have a question for Commissioner Blau. If the applicant, which he's not, but I'm just going to use an example, wanted to have a plastic operation so he could make pots that would hold his plants, that would be seen not as an incidental use, but as a use for his nursery. But there again, that's a manufacturing operation. So I'm not sure, you know, I guess for me, and I'll discuss it later, but this is a manufacturing operation. It's the same thing, it's not, hasn't got anything to do with bringing in peat moss and putting in a bag. That's not, you're not manufacturing anything, you're transferring the use of something. But this is about cutting stone into smaller pieces. I'm sorry that you didn't get to see his other site, but it's quite an industrial operation with, I don't know how to describe it, but it's industrial strength, I guess all I can say.
Just to reorient our discussion, I want to be sure we have all of staff's input, and then we'll move to our deliberations, and the points that we've been making, I think, get very close to deliberation. Obviously, there are differences of statutory interpretation here, but also in just the difficulty of this application. It does present an appealing operational change to what is an existing operation, and part of the delay has to be attributed to the fact that staff somehow wanted to approve this project and has for some time. So now it's at the commission, apparently for the first time, and good, bad, or indifferent, we have to make a decision as to what our ordinance says in the light of this application. So before we move to our views on the appropriateness of this appeal, I want to make sure that everyone at the table here has had an opportunity to give us the input they think necessary. Ms. Black? Ms. Black.
Mr. Chair, without trying to interfere with your deliberations, I think it, just going back to the definition of agricultural processing, so that at least the commission understands where Staff was coming from in making the recommendation, says the initial processing or preparation for shipping of agricultural products produced on the same site. So I guess our position is the rock, it doesn't come from this site, and they are processing it. It would be, it wouldn't be possible for us to approve somebody packing vegetables produced off-site on somebody else's site, let alone cutting and splitting rock from another site on this site. So I just, I'm not sure if the subtlety of the ordinance language is appreciated here. But I think if we're going to allow this type of an incidental use and consider it to be processing of products produced on the same site, I just have concerns as to how it might apply elsewhere.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may add, rock is not an agricultural product. Mining and quarrying are allowed in ag zones, but rock is not an agricultural product to be processed.
So, Mr. Allen, just following that thought through, if the rocks to be used by the applicant were dug up from the property on which the existing operation is sited, and split there and sold there, that would be within the ordinance, processing, agricultural processing sufficient that we could grant the permit?
Mr. Chair, within a mining and quarrying permitted operation, you could mine rock and do, and I'm not sure what the extent is of processing. It can be done on rock, but I know a certain amount of it can be done on-site.
That would be pursuant to a conditional use permit, because it's a permitted use in that zone, okay. I will say, before we get into deliberations, and not to limit the discussion at all, I do think the issues were presented well by Staff. And that's by you, Ms. Gibbs. I'm not talking about prior Staff, and I have no doubt, Ms. Weinheimer, who has been with this process a long time, knows better than we do how much trouble there has been in terms of processing this application. But the issues are clear, and I think you've done a good job of presenting them. And I certainly understand how you got to the result you did. So I think we're in a position now to turn to the will of the commission, and if there is an exact even division, we'll be back to you, Mr. Allen, for the consequences of that. The first is Commissioner Valencio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess I'm struggling with processing and preparation. Processing is incidental to the nursery operation. I guess that's the major problem, processing. And to me, processing a rock product would mean that you'd get to the quarry, you'd dig, you'd select the rock, you'd wash it, you'd transport it, you'd bring it to be polished or tumbled, you'd do quality control, and then you'd put it out for sale. In this particular case, they're just bringing it, they're not polishing it, they're not tumbling it, they're just cutting it. It's a rough cut. There's only, of the eight or ten processes that are included in processing, they only do one or two of the processes. So it isn't really processing a rock. If you go to some of the other rock areas where they polish them, they clean them up, they do a processing, they have them sorted out by site, he's just got a big pile there. It's no big, I mean, it isn't a major rock operation like a, we've been to the quarries up at Tepis Quad and some of the other quarries, and it's completely different from then.
Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, I'm going to, we've started by saying that I do appreciate Staff's dilemma and position in this. And if I were Ms. Gibbs or Ms. Black, I would have made the same recommendation. I don't think Staff has the authority to so generously interpret the ordinances. However, having said that, I mean, the reality here is I think we think this is a pretty good operation, a pretty good operator, and we'd all like to see it happen. I will tell you that I can be as clever as you need to be interpreting the regulations here, but I will, I will try and make it easier for you. I would agree this is not agricultural processing, which is what you were talking about. There's no, in our code, we don't have a definition of processing, we have a definition of agricultural processing, okay? We're not agricultural processing these rocks. I think what we're doing is we are a nursery, we are taking our product and we are modifying it slightly. I'll call it processing the rock. And I wouldn't define this agricultural processing. My analogy, I think, with repackaging, you know, a bulk product into smaller bags is not much different. We got this big rock, we make it small rocks. That's how we process it. And I wouldn't call that mining. Mining is digging it up out of the ground. So I'm not having a problem with the language. Having said that, I'm, you know, I'm actually prepared to approve this project and have it go forward.
Commissioner Brown.
You know, I think Commissioner Blau's discussion is interesting, because I can read this. And if I took out the modifier to "products," which is agricultural, if I just eliminated that, the products would still need to be produced on the same site. So there's, if it were trees, I could see that, you're growing the trees. But it's not about trees, it's about rocks, which are coming from outside of the site. So, you know, for me, it's, this is a manufacturing, an industrial-type operation with industrial-type impacts. And I think that the ordinance, I read it, was written to, just to preclude this very type of operation. It's the conversion of, or it's allowing ag to become a, to include a manufacturing operation. And I don't think that that was the intent of the ordinance. I think the intent was, it was about organic products. I don't mean organic, the kind you eat, but those that are living or were living. It's not about taking rocks, which were not living, they're chemical nature, they're inorganic materials. I think that's what agriculture is, and that everything I see here describes an organic nature of a product. It's taking that product and doing something with it. It's not about bringing something from off-site and manipulating it and implying an industrial-type operation where you need industrial-type equipment and processing to process it. It's a fairly intensive process. I was totally amazed at the extent to which the operation and what it involves at the Kellogg site. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think it fits in to the definition of agriculture. I don't think it fits into the definition of agricultural processing as I read it. Now, maybe the buildings to allow, his buildings to house the material would be satisfactory. But I, you know, I also have another problem, is just I looked at that slide, and seeing the products that are being produced, these products are going to be outside of the size limitation for which he is allowed, of the twelve to twenty-eight inches in diameter. You know, he's going to take rocks and split them, they're going to be bigger than these twenty-eight inches. So that's another problem, it's an incidental problem. But I just feel that we're pushing the envelope, and, you know, ag is being converted everywhere. I don't know why we want to accelerate the conversion of this particular ag parcel to an industrial-type application with its impacts. I, what I would have liked to have seen the applicant do is either try to go in for a rezone or perhaps even be annexed to the city of Goleta, where an M-one zone district might have been applied to this, if this is what he wants to do. But I see this as an ag, it's, doesn't Commissioner Blau's indication that it's a very small piece, I don't, they'll make any difference to me if it's point oh-one percent. This is still, doesn't fall under the description or the meaning of the ordinance. And I, you know, I agree with Commissioner Valencio. I mean, I think it'd be nice to find some way to allow the guy to do this. But I just, for me, it's a manufacturing process, where you're taking this rock. It's got nothing to do with any of the food or fiber, the growing of plants, got nothing to do with that. It's about an incidental use that has a product that's brought from off-site. And I just, I'm sorry, all I can do is support Staff's recommendation. I think we're treading on slippery ground here, that we opened the door to this, we set, we set a precedent where others could do this in an ag-zoned district, in an I-gone-zoned. And all these inland, these urban ag pieces on the edge of the urban boundaries are all subject to tremendous development pressures. And here is a use which I feel that every commissioner would like to see this guy, this applicant, be allowed to have this ability to do this on this site. I just see it going in the wrong direction. I feel it's very important to adhere to the policy, to the policies which are outlined in the L U D C. And for me, this is, certainly doesn't fall into that category.
Commissioner Valencio.
One final comment, Mr. Chair. Again, I'm still troubled with this word "processing." And I think that in processing, when you're manufacturing something, you are on a schedule and you expect something to be a particular size. You have parameters of what you want, whether they're boxes or product of what. This is all incidental. The product that he gets is incidental, there's some digging. And in manufacturing, you need a particular time schedule when you get things. Somebody calls him and he says, "We have some rocks." That isn't a schedule, and it's very incidental. So it can't possibly be a manufacturing thing, or he'd never survive. So I'm just, you know, everything is random, it's very incidental, and it's not time, it doesn't have time restrictions on it. It's just whenever there's available, there might be ten tons of rock one day, and then three months, it might be three months before he finds any rock. So it's very sporadic and impossible to say it's a manufacturing process. Thank you.
I think I should advise the applicant where I'm coming from, and then we'll get to process as to whether we move ahead with a vote. First of all, there's a lengthy record that has been made by Ms. Weinheimer of the length of time that the project has taken, the number of people that have been assigned. And it's clear, as Ms. Black indicated, that this could have been handled differently and better by Staff and by the Planning and Development Department. Ms. Gibbs notwithstanding, and her efforts notwithstanding, that's not a reason to approve a project that otherwise is not appropriate to approve. And I don't care if it's a project to completely rezone a section or amend the general plan, or something as simple as trying to put a swimming pool in your backyard. It is not a good reason to make a decision based on how the matter's been handled by Staff. It is here today, and what we have is really like judicial interpretation. We're being asked to put on our hats and interpret existing language in existing ordinances, not to change the ordinances, not to amend those, that's not our role today. And we might all agree that the ordinance should be written differently to allow this type of use, or we might not. But regardless of that, our role is simply to interpret the language and to come up with a conclusion that either sustains the appeal that the applicant has made or upholds Staff's original determination. And on that issue, the concern I have is certainly not for this rock operation and what slight effect it might have on the surrounding environment. But we, at least here on the South Coast, have many, many, many greenhouse operations where plants are grown and sold to wholesalers, sold at retail. And along with those, certainly there are containers that are sold and shipped with the product. And as I read the ordinance, if we were to interpret this as manufacturing and permit it to be done, or processing and permit it to be done in an ag zone, we would be saying to every nursery owner, "You may build the containers on-site. You can construct the flower baskets on-site and put them together with your product and send it out." That may be the way to go. But I don't feel like we have the power to make that decision. That really is a matter for the Board of Supervisors. If it's necessary to expand the uses permitted on ag land to sustain ag, it's going to get a lot of support, it should get a lot of support. But in this instance, I feel we're limited by the language, the existing language. And no matter which way you package it, you're going to come up with an objection based on the fact that the rock that is to be manufactured is coming off-site to be processed here on-site. And that's the real, the real crucial issue as far as I'm concerned in terms of trying to force it through an interpretation that would permit this use. So I have to agree with Commissioner Brown, maybe not so much on policy reasons, but just on statutory interpretation, I don't think this proposed use fits. Now, that's not true with respect to the construction of one of the equipment storage buildings. I think it's a small matter, but in order to be true to our role here today, I think we're in a position to approve that application, not require the applicant to go back. If he chooses to build an additional structure there to store equipment in, that's certainly his choice, and I'd be in favor of doing that. So I guess where I come down is that I would narrowly sustain the appeal as to the equipment storage building, but otherwise deny the appeal. And we haven't voted. Ms. Black has discussed with the applicant the process and the outcome. Ms. Weinheimer, would you like to address us on that issue?
Mr. Chair, I would. There are just two points I'd like to make. The first is one that you just touched on, and that is the issue of greenhouses. If we're going to make a distinction here about processing, I think we need to be fair about what processing is allowed in connection with greenhouses. The processing that takes place in a greenhouse is extensive. I think it's unrealistic for us to say that that is somehow acceptable agricultural processing, and what Mr. Langhorn is presenting is not. Second, I am concerned about the number of references that have been made to the on-site nature of this. The importation of the trees and the importation of the rocks has been permitted for years. Nothing is native to this ten-acre site. This is a unique operation. These trees don't grow there, they are all imported. So if we're going to make a distinction about on-site, I think we need to recognize that the County of Santa Barbara has already approved the importation of eight hundred tons of rock to this location. Having said that, and I actually can't believe I'm actually suggesting we extend this discussion, but I think it may make sense, and having spoken with Ms. Black, I think she concurs, that it may make sense to bring this back for review when the full commission is present and allow an additional conversation to take place at that time with all five members. Then if we end up moving forward and needing to go to the board, we can do so with the full commission's position known. With that, I would request that continuance be granted.
I'm sure in applying to the, to the staff and appealing this to the commission, you had in mind a five-member commission and did not necessarily contemplate the possibility of an unsuccessful determination based on a lack of a majority. So you're certainly entitled to that, but I want to make sure that that's your request.
Yes, it is. And as you say, we, since we do apparently have a split decision by the commission, I would appreciate the opportunity to have this heard by all five members. I would also extend the invitation to those that were locked out. I would also extend the invitation to those that were locked out to arrange a site visit where you actually get to see the entire operation, and we can arrange that either with the full commission or individually, whatever suits you.
Do you have a suggestion as to timing? Is it soon as possible, or do you need more time?
I will defer to staff on that.
Very well. Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, I don't think we need any particular amount of time. I really think this is so that Commissioner Jackson can review the record, and then the commission can take action. Our agenda on November 7th is extremely full, that would be our next meeting, so I would suggest that we put this on November 14th, even though it's a North County meeting, because there's really nobody in the public who seems to be particularly interested. So otherwise, I don't see a free agenda until December 5th.
I would ask the applicant if that's a problem for them. I could see this on November 7th, actually, because I don't think this is going to take 10 minutes on November 7th, but that's up to the applicant, I think.
It's, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, it's up to your commission as well. I'm just looking at the 7th and looking at seven hours, but that, but it's up to you.
Mr. Chair, I do have a commitment in the South County on the, is it the 14th? That Wednesday, in the afternoon, so I would be somewhat reluctant to agree to a North County meeting and not necessarily get finished.
Well, I think you, you know, the, we are anxious to get back to it while it's fresh in all our minds, we don't want too much time to go by, on the other hand, you know, let's meet at a time which is convenient to you. So, so far, the 7th may be too soon, and it's a full agenda, the 14th is inconvenient, so we're looking at our next meeting being the 28th, and that's also North County. We could meet in the North County and add this on at the risk of getting to it late in the day, or we could continue it to December 5 in Santa Barbara.
December 5? We'll take December the 5th.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we need a motion, Commissioner Brown, to continue this matter to the commission's regular agenda of the 5th of December.
I'll make the motion to continue this item to December 5th.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Ms. Oplin.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Vote carries 4-0.
All right, thank you very much, Commissioners and staff. We will, we'll take a five-minute recess, and we'll take up Item 3 on the agenda, which is the T-Mobile site on North Fairview. Can you please read that into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of T-Mobile Wireless to consider case number 06CUP 32, application filed June 12, 2006, for a conditional use permit and to accept the exemption pursuant to Section 15303 of the State Guidelines for Implementation of SEQA.
Thank you, Ms. Oplin. Commissioners, have you all had a chance to see the site? Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chair, I visited the site when we heard this application last year, and I don't believe that the site itself has changed. I believe it's exactly the same position, so I did visit the site, but it was last year.
Commissioner Blau?
I visited the site this morning, yes.
Commissioner Valencia?
And I visited the site.
And I had seen the site for the prior application, and went back and did a little more investigation, so I've seen it recently as well. Good morning, Mr. Anthony, and Ms. Allen.
Good morning, members of the commission. My name is Heather Allen, and I am here to bring before you a request for approval of a major CUP for an unmanned wireless telecommunications facility. This facility is to be located in the county right-of-way adjacent to North Fairview Avenue in a royal residential area shown above. The proposed facility would be located inland in the 2nd Supervisory District. This project was originally brought before the Planning Commission and approved on October 25, 2006. However, it was appealed during the follow-up land use permit appeal period by Karen and Charlie Brigette, on the grounds of inadequate noticing, among other things. The Brigette, the Brigettes argued that the address of 875 1/2 North Fairview Avenue, given by the applicant, was misleading. The proposed project has no address because it is located in the county right-of-way. However, it is situated in the 900 block of North Fairview Avenue and is adjacent to properties with addresses on the 1,000 block. Planning and development staff agreed with the Brigettes, resulting in a hearing de The proposed site would consist of two separate components, the antennas and equipment areas. These are located approximately 76 feet apart in the county right-of-way on the east and west side of North Fairview Avenue, adjacent to 1,000 and 1,035 North Fairview Avenue. This is an aerial view of the project neighborhood with the two project components represented by the yellow stars. The nearest parcel, which is 150 feet away from the proposed antennas, is located on the parcel that's outlined in red. North Fairview Avenue transverses this map north and south, in between the equipment area and the proposed antennas. The facility is proposed in a hilly region at an elevation of approximately 135 feet above sea level and situated on approximate 2% grade. The facility would require a 270-foot square foot lease, and due to the height of the panel antennas, which exceeds the height limit of a residential designation of 35 feet, the project requires a major CUP and zoning clearance. Here is a photo simulation of the proposed project looking south from North Fairview Three panel antennas would be installed on the west side of North Fairview Avenue atop a new 56-foot, 6-inch wood utility pole to replace an existing 56-foot, 6-inch tall California Edison utility pole. The 54-foot panel, or 54-inch panel antennas would be placed on a cross arm at a center line of 56 feet. The antenna equipment would be painted Alchaz brown to match the existing poles. Here is a photo that I've included showing North Fairview Avenue, just to show that it's lined with existing utility poles. The equipment area would be located 76 feet east of the utility pole in the right-of-way on the east side of North Fairview Avenue, and constructed of two concrete blocks with a floor area of approximately 72 square feet. This area would contain two equipment cabinets and one electrical meter pedestal. The equipment area would be painted black and beam and shielded by eight 5-gallon lemonade berry shrubs. Here's two photos of the lemonade berry shrubs surrounding the equipment area. This is from the photo simulation, and this is from the project plans. Telephone and power service would extend approximately 76 feet east from the utility pole to the equipment area, requiring 103 cubic yards of ground trenching. Trenching is proposed in the dirt area alongside existing roadways to alleviate impacts from digging in vegetated areas. This is a picture of the proposed location that shows a view south from North Fairview Avenue. The equipment would be placed in the open dirt area to the left, the three panel antennas would be placed on the cross arm atop the utility pole to the right. The vegetation surrounding the utility pole will need to be trimmed during construction associated with the replacement of the utility pole. As a condition of approval, the applicant has agreed to replace the vegetation, if it is impaired, with similar native drought-tolerant shrubs, and is required to submit a performance security to ensure that no damage will occur to the existing vegetation surrounding the Here is another view of the proposed antennas, visible from North Fairview Avenue about a half-mile south. This coverage map shows network service without the proposed site along the residential areas of North Fairview Avenue. In the middle, the red star shows a proposed site, and to the southeast, the black stars show existing cellular facilities. Green areas have good coverage, and yellow areas have fair coverage. The target area in which T-Mobile would like to improve its coverage and capacity lies along North Fairview Avenue. As shown in the map, the nearest existing cell site is approximately 5,050 feet southeast, located on Caillou Real. Both existing on-air sites provide network coverage but miss the middle area of the map along North Fairview Avenue. This is the area to be served by the proposed cell site. The coverage map shows network service area with the proposed site along Fairview Avenue. Again, the red star is a proposed site, and the black stars are existing telecom facilities. Again, green areas have good coverage, and yellow areas have fair coverage. As illustrated, the green areas that represent good coverage would be increased in the middle of the map with the addition of the new site. This allows T-Mobile customers in this area the ability to make calls and travel along North Fairview Avenue without experiencing dropped calls. The applicant has taken adequate measures to address public safety concerns. Concerns regarding the proposed antennas include exposure to the radio frequency emissions emitted by the antenna equipment. However, the maximum effective radiated power at this site would total less than 1% of the maximum public limit at the nearby residence. Dr. Gerald Bushberg, an RF consultant for the county, has reviewed the revised RF report for accuracy. He concluded that the maximum public exposure from the site at 30 feet from the antenna, where the avocado orchard is located, and at the same elevation of the antennas, is 3.8% of the public maximum exposure limit. The public exclusion area directly in front of and at the same elevation of the antenna would be 5 feet in length and 3 feet in width. Planning and development staff are secure with Dr. Bushberg's assessment that the exposure to the radio frequency emissions would be well below the public exposure, the maximum public exposure limit. Staff has found the proposed project to be consistent with the provisions of the Santa Barbara County Comprehensive Plan, the GALLIDA Community Plan, and the County Land Use Development Code, Sections 35.44.010 for telecommunications facilities, and Section 35.23.050 for residential zone designation. The high requirement for facilities located on existing utility poles is waived. The Board of Architectural Review has conceptionally approved the project on October 6, 2006. Staff has determined that the project is categorically exempt under Section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act for construction of small facilities. Following review of the proposed project at this site, no conflicts with the present use of the site were discovered. The project is proposed outside of designated environmentally sensitive habitat boundaries, and the site was visited by a county environmental quality assurance program monitor. The monitor did not find any issues with erosion. However, he did recommend removing the existing pole between August 1st and March 1st, due to the pole being used as a nesting and acorn storage by a colony of acorn woodpeckers. In summary, staff recommends that the commission move to adopt the required findings specified in Attachment A of the staff report, accept the SEQA exemption found in Attachment B, and approve the project subject to the conditions of approval in Section C. However, I would like to remove Condition 5 in Section C, page C-4, that deals with lighting at the facility. T-Mobile has decided that lighting is not necessary. They'll just have workers work on the equipment cabinets during the day. I would be happy to answer any questions or discuss any issues further, and Tim Miller, the T-Mobile agent, is also present to answer questions.
Mr. Brown has a question.
The map that you showed us of T-Mobile's coverage, are there other, this is just of T-Mobile sites? Is that correct, or is this other cell sites?
Yes, that is correct.
Which?
Yes, that is correct.
But which? It's T-Mobile sites or other?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I think that is just T-Mobile sites.
Okay, so are there other cell sites in this area or near these properties?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I will have to get back to you with that answer.
Okay, the reason I'm asking the question is, if there are, then there's a cumulative effect of the radiation, and that's the only reason I'm asking that question.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, there are no antennas near this facility that would add to radio frequency emissions.
So basically, it's the one at North Fairview, it's the one at the GALLIDA Water District, probably, I don't know who's, who that belongs to, is that T-Mobile? And that's, and then the ones on Caillou Real? And that's all the ones that are in that area? I mean, there's no other carrier which has a cell site in that area?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I believe that is to be correct.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Allen? Mr. Anthony?
Mr. Chair, a quick note with a recommendation from council, rather than removing Condition 5, what we would like to do is simply change it to read, no exterior lighting will be, permanent exterior lighting will be allowed with this project, or shall be allowed. Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing further for staff at this point, then we would turn to the applicant. We have Tim Miller. Morning, Mr. Miller.
Your Honorable Chair, members of the commission, my name is Tim Miller, here on behalf of Ms. Allen, this presentation was pretty detailed, I don't want to go too much more into it. Project is pretty self-explanatory, and we have reviewed this once before, but I did want to go into the handout that was given to you just prior before sitting back down to go over this item, and that's this map here. I wanted to explain to you that on page 7 of your staff report and on the presentation showing the existing coverage in the area, you do see the yellow area all around of our, all around our site, and the little legend down there says it's fair coverage. Now, what I want you to know is, does our computer-generated maps here just for, to go off of, it's a help tool until we go out there and get the actual data in the field, and that's what was handed to you just beforehand. This shows you, the engineers actually go out to the roads, they carry an instrument to figure out the signal level and the strength of the signal. They drive around in their car, that's why it's called the drive test, they have it logged into their computer, and this is the data that comes out. This gives you actual information of what the signal coverage is in the area. So I wanted to have that to you, to show you that there is discrepancy from what the computer generated to what's actually out there, and this shows you that there is a need for the site. Just to go into it, too, we did look at other areas, there weren't any other sites that we could co-locate, and we did look off of Cathedral Oaks, we looked at many areas, we looked at five different alternative sites, and the landlords weren't interested, and that's why we moved to this, this utility pole. And we are trading out- We have included also, as you see before, the suggestions for the bushes in front of it, the move back, setback from the side of the road 10 feet before we started with the bushes and the equipment located behind there. So there won't be any interference with those who like to jog along the side of the road, all that will be cut clean. With that, if you'll have any questions, we're more than happy to answer them, and I'll just like to reserve my time until after everyone else gets up to speak.
Commissioner Brown has a question.
You know, I ask this question every time we see a cell site, and the question has to do with, and you may not be able to answer it specifically, but maybe you can answer it generally, is that we're all concerned about these RF emissions, but in our own home, we have a lot of RF emissions, from the microwave, from the tea kettles, from the wireless internet system I've got in my house, from the TV, from the electric blanket, from the cellphone that we might use. Can you place the emissions that we get, that will be gotten, that will be from this project with all the applications that might be in our home, in a ballpark? Could you do that?
It would be tough for me to say, every situation is different. I just, I can just tell you that we will fall well below what the FCC standards and guidelines are.
Right.
And it's, and the difference is, is we're an extremely low-powered facility here, and as you can see, just moving out a little bit, once you start to move back from the facility, just, you know, once you're 10 feet out, then you move another 10 feet out, it doesn't just, it drops radically then with the emissions.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct. So, and this is, this is all non-ionizing energy, so therefore, it's not like, when you think of non-ionizing, it's not, it doesn't break down the cells or cause them to change, you know, abnormal, you know, development of cells type of deal, that's right, really, it's not ionizing, not ionizing energy. So there's two different kinds of energies we're talking about here with emissions, and that's what we need to also look at here. So it is safe type of emission.
So are most cell sites the non-ionizing type?
That's, that's what it is, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you. What is the beam width of these antennas?
I'd have to, I do have a radio frequency engineer who can give you the beam width.
Well, the reason I'm asking is that they're, they're all pointing in a southerly direction, and I was wondering what happens to the people that are north of the site? The antennas are at 240 and at 180 and 140, so nothing is projected to the back part of Fairview.
That, that's correct. Our coverage objective is actually to the south, and plus the terrain slopes upward toward that area.
So there isn't any coverage up there?
Correct. It won't be going back that area because it won't be able to see it. What we're trying to do here is, you want to have the antennas, you want to be able to contain where the signal goes, so you have to have a little bit of a down tilt to it, so that way you can contain the area it's in, keep that area covered, and make sure you're not going into other existing coverage areas. So you don't want to just turn your antenna up because it's just going to go up to the air, and we just want to get ground coverage here.
But I mean, you could have had one pointed to zero degrees to get, to cover all those people down there, right?
If you're at zero degrees and you're going north, you're not going to really get the coverage up the hill there.
Well, you would cover the continuation of Fairview. Fairview continues north from the site where you're at, and it goes over a little hump and goes down.
Correct. And when you-
And so there's a lot of houses down there, they don't-
Well, the, the signal works by line of sight, so therefore, let's just take, for instance, you do have the hill, and let's say you're to shine a spotlight over that hill at night, it's going to go past a lot of that area below, so you're not going to get the coverage under there. That's, it goes down below on the other side of the hill, so therefore, it's going to create an effect, so you're going to have to find some way to get the coverage in from another area back to-
Strictly line of sight is what you're telling me.
Correct.
So, and I remember that it goes down, there isn't a hill up there where you're going to put a pole higher than, so that would cover all these areas?
Well, there's different levels, right now for our coverage needs is, was basically around Cathedral Oaks area here and to the south, and since we exhausted all of those possibilities, that's the reason we went to the right-of-way here. And so, at this point, our coverage needs are to this, to this general area. Future expansion and future need for the network might lead for more coverage in that area.
Yeah. I just, I just hope that the people in that area know that you're not giving them, they're not going to have coverage from this, there's only be coverage in a downward, in southerly area from that antenna, and then probably to 270 and 90, right?
270 and 90.
Yeah, the beam width is probably about 30 degrees, 60 degrees, you have about 60-degree beam width.
Yeah, it would cover around there. I mean, basically what you're seeing there, it is going to cover out in that direction where you see the green on the map.
Well, I'm looking at this one here, which has the, shows the streets and that type of thing, and so if you're at 140 and you subtract, say, 30, that brings you to what, 110, you wouldn't even go, you wouldn't even cover the people in the east. There's a big, large eastern, eastern group up here that are not going to be covered by the beam width.
I, I understand, and the reason that we want to cover specific area, because each site only has so much capacity they can use, there's only so many people who can operate on a site at one time. So we want to make sure that we're getting the coverage to the area that's needed, not to say that we don't have, T-Mobile doesn't have development plans in the future for, to cover that area.
But this is, this is within the range of that, you know, if you look, you know, the range is, what, probably two, two miles, three miles here? You have a range of about five miles, don't you?
No, no.
What is your range?
This site is covering a lot less than five miles. Usually, right now, our sites are averaging maybe half a mile in radius, and that is due to population and use of our sites, especially a site like this when you only have two equipment cabinets, you're talking about a call, probably hold about a little bit over 100 calls. So you're, you don't have that ability, you don't have like we do old analog phones, where you would go shoot out for a couple miles, two or three miles, in order to get all the coverage and all the use on there.
So if you only have a half a mile, you have a repeater site at some point close by?
Well, we don't usually use the repeater, we want another site, yes, but we have those to the south here. As you can see, we have two that are close together, and that's because of the area and the call volume that we have. We need to be able to handle all those calls at once, and so the engineer takes all this information into account, not just how far it can cover, what it can actually see, but how do we need to serve the people to make sure they can actually make a phone call with each site, and they're not going to get dropped, that they're not going to be able to sit there and not be able to go through on the, on the site. So they got to take in multiple factors, not just the area where it can see, it's the people who use the system, how many calls it can hold, so on and so forth. So there's many factors that come into play here, and they take this all into account when they're designing the network.
Okay. Seems like you need coverage over in the eastern sector, but that's up to you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions for Mr. Miller? All right, thanks. We'll hear from you again in a few minutes. The first of our public speakers is Robert Levine, he'll be followed by Charlie Burgett.
I apologize for bringing these materials at a late time. I, I didn't have a lot of time to prepare from receiving the information about this meeting, so if you'll read them, that'd be great, if not, I'll understand. My name is Robert Levin, I'm representing myself. I own the parcel of land on the east side of Fairview Avenue where it's proposed that two equipment cabinets and electrical meter pedestal be placed. In a previous document dated February 16, 2007, I express a number of my concerns about this project. I will not repeat all of those concerns here. I do, however, feel like the Burgetts and my family are involved in a bit of a David and Goliath-like battle, with our two families struggling against a German multinational conglomerate, T-Mobile. This corporation has already placed some 30,000 to 35,000 such poles throughout the United States. Their efforts to receive permits must be quite practiced by now. I documented a number of ways in my February 16 letter that they were nevertheless deceptive and dishonest in the way they proceeded in their efforts to receive a permit from Santa Barbara County. In the hearing which the Burgetts and I attended a number of months ago, they were asked to represent, to present a new, more realistic map as to just how effective, given the mountainous terrain and new tower at that site would be, a new tower at that site would be, not the map that you were handed earlier. They agreed, I have not seen that map. The map that is found on pages seven and eight of the staff report is incomprehensible, with no labeled streets or distances. On the T-Mobile architectural drawings, sheet four, the edge of the architectural cabinets is 11 feet from the road, the gentleman who just spoke revised that and said it would be 10 feet from the road. Yet the eight-foot-wide bushes in diameter that will be placed to screen them, as pictured in the other pictures that you saw earlier, which were more accurate, will be placed, are only depicted to be about two or three feet wide. Why is this important? The east side of Fairview Avenue is a major route for children to walk to school and for joggers. A true depiction of the placement of these cabinets and the bushes to be planted will push those children out into the road in order to walk past them. This is another deception. I feel that Santa Barbara, and the other deception, I should say, was spoken right in front of you just a few moments ago. The gentleman who spoke from T-Mobile talked about ionizing radiation. No one's talking about ionizing radiation. Ionizing radiation is nuclear radiation, radioactive substances. If the waves that are emanating from these kind of towers are not of significance to people's health, why are limits placed, and how high should they be? Ionizing radiation is not the only kind of dangerous, or a kind of radiation that's dangerous. I feel that Santa Barbara County's planning commission should reject this application because of the numerous deceptions that have appeared in its preparation, inaccuracies which should not be there after having done this 30,000 to 35,000 times previously, unless these deceptions are useful for getting their applications passed by busy planning commissions. Send T-Mobile a message that this planning commission wants accurate and honest applications, and say no. Santa Barbara should reject this application because it will endanger the lives of children and joggers on Fairview Avenue? In an era where we have started to recognize the importance of safe corridors for our children to walk to school, where the built environment is taking on such great significance, do not let us take a step backward. At a time when we're placing more and more cables underground, when we're showing concern for preserving the beauty of our environment, the replacement of a pole and the new placement of equipment cabinets which detract from the beauty of the countryside is difficult to justify. I'm a physician and I work in public health. In fact, I'm the county health officer in your neighboring county. As such, I deal with health-related issues of all types on a daily basis. In support of the concerns raised by the property owners on the west side of Fairview Avenue raised in the past, the science behind the safety of such towers just isn't there. I investigated the health implications of wireless communication towers by speaking with the most knowledgeable person on the subject in the state, Dr. Raymond Neutra, who's head of environmental health in the State Department of Public Health for California. He stated the following: "The bottom line is this, there are no studies yet of cell tower emissions, and the World Health Organization will be saying that there is insufficient evidence to classify cell phones or cell towers. I think there is suspicious evidence about cell phones by looking at the same series of studies that the World Health Organization is looking at. Cell towers are usually quite weak, but there's, there is lots of anecdotal complaint. I've observed a number of hearings similar to this one in my official capacity as health officer. I'm keenly aware that somehow by the nature of these hearings, the speakers always somehow appear to be quacks. It puts me, it puts us at quite a disadvantage. I hope that you can see past that disadvantage that the Burgetts and I share, and conclude to do the right thing and reject T-Mobile's application." Thank you.
Dr. Levin?
Yes.
Your county is which?
Ventura.
Do you know-
I don't come here in an official capacity, however, I come here as a, as a landowner in Santa Barbara County and a taxpayer.
I appreciate that, and I'm only asking you this in connection with your experience as health officer in Ventura County. Have you had occasion to discuss this with any of the planning authorities in Ventura County?
I have not. I was thinking about that question on the way over here. Issues related to cell phones and cell towers have only arisen twice in the 10 years that I've been there, and my involvement, my being questioned about them never went very far, and I've never appeared in any official hearing related to them.
Well, needless to say, this commission takes your concerns seriously, and, and yet, the regulations that we labor under are emanating from the federal government and, and apply in Ventura County, I imagine, the same as they do here, so we certainly need the profession to stand up and tell us if there's a way to resist these federal regulations on the basis of health and welfare of our population.
And, and the reason I cannot, you know, lower the, the hammer against it is because the information just simply isn't there yea or nay for health effects. There are, as I said, anecdotal concerns. In fact, there was a, apparently a, a well-known case that's well-known to the state of a fire department that had one of these units either in Santa Barbara County or Ventura, which, with some modifications, relieved the symptoms that people were experiencing there. And these were at the low levels, the original unit, that were considered to be safe, but the fire personnel were experiencing symptoms nevertheless.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
Mr. Burgett?
Staff and commissioners, thank you very much. My name is Charlie Burgett, and I, I represent myself and Karen Burgett, landowners and residents at 1035 North Fairview. There are many inconsistencies that we have listed in our presentation in our objection, and I'd like to summarize a couple of them, but if I could, unless to help Heather, if, could you put up the aerial map and just let me show you? You have an aerial photo of our property. Yes, there we go. If I can approach the, the drawing. Do you have that pointer? This is very relevant to the conclusion I want to make, and that is, that here's the cell tower, and the photos that we've posted in our objection, I'm standing approximately 13 feet away from that transmitter right here at this level. And so, the transmitter and our property are in the range, arguably the range of 12 to 13 feet. So, the radiation levels that we experience on our property should be considered at that level. We are on an eye-to-eye level with that transmitter because the pole is positioned at the bottom of the Fairview Road Cut, and the pole is about 57 feet high, and we're approximately 70 feet above, let's see, we're approximately 60 feet, we're at 200 feet at our house. And so, I'm on an eye-to-eye level both as I stand next to the pole on our property, as I, which is, which is right here, as I stand in our, along our fence in our yard, and this is our house, our residence here. So this, this residence with rural parcel is mislabeled. This is our residence right here. It's approximately 100 feet away from this antenna, essentially directly to the west. Our play, our grandchildren's play yard is about 100 feet away from the antenna, right here at the side of the house. So, our point is that we are within, literally within a few feet of this transmitting antenna. Notwithstanding the current radiation level limits, we feel that this antenna would put economics ahead of safety and ahead of aesthetics. We are on an eye level with this antenna from our house and from the children's play yard, in fact, our entire yard, and we are frightened by the level of radiation that it might emit, and as Dr. Levin had mentioned, there are no agreed-upon standards. I understand that you're obliged to comply to federal standards, but European standards are far more restrictive. For example, you can't place a pole within about 750 feet of a, a school or residential area. We're about 10 to 12 feet from this antenna. So, other localities are very much more conservative. The truth is, as Dr. Levin pointed out, no one really knows. There haven't been long-term studies, and so there's no way for us to know whether these are dangerous or not dangerous. There isn't enough study. All we know is that we're going to be subjected to this for a period of years in a continuous manner. We're residents here, our grandchildren come and play here- We're residents here, our grandchildren come and play here and we have no choice if this is passed. The people who use cellphones have a choice either to put down or pick up the cellphone and use it. So, they have a choice for that radiation. If this is passed, we have no choice because we are residents and we're full-time residents here. My wife is retired, I plan to retire soon, I hope to, and we plan to live there permanently and so we are permanently exposed to these radiations. So, it's our firm plea that this be denied for the first reason, that it's unknown and unsafe radiation. We have a, we've listed an entire list in the presentation papers and we can oppose them on all those counts, that it doesn't comply, that it's in opposition to what, to the standards. We include the aesthetics of this pole. It's not aesthetic, it's in with, we're looking at it right out of our front room window. We're blessed with a three hundred and sixty-degree view, that's why we chose this property four years ago. We've been residents of Santa Barbara and Galita specifically for over thirty years, since nineteen seventy-four and we moved to this lovely place in two thousand and three, specifically because of the location. It's beautiful, we love it, it's residential, has a, has a very rural feel and we're just overjoyed and feel very fortunate to live here. The first thing is it's very safe. Galita is a very safe place to live. We've been just truly blessed by living in the, one of the safest places in the nation, I believe, as far as I can tell. And it's my privilege and obligation to protect family and to protect our loved ones and so the first thing I must do is to oppose anything with unknown safety implications. And so, we strongly oppose it and we'll oppose it on all the levels of which, which include aesthetics, we don't like the view of it, which include the safety, of course, number one, and which include the, the economic. We contend that T-Mobile is putting this pole here for economic purposes, that it's cheaper to put it here than to place it farther away where they have to run lines farther. And so, we oppose that. That's putting economics ahead of safety and aesthetics and we think that's wrong. It's my obligation and privilege to defend that and I also believe it's the obligation and privilege of, of the county to defend that, to defend that far in advance of economic gain. And so, our argument in the copious papers and attachments are such that we oppose it for those reasons and we must, please, plead that, that it be denied.
Mr. Burgett, we have a couple of questions, if you don't mind?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, uh, the, we have a calculation by Hamid Edison, a consulting engineer from San Francisco, which has your particular site there and we have a picture of it here and it says, "Calculated RF exposure level is one hundred times below the public limit." Have you seen that?
Yes, I have. I, we've read all that and...
So, if it's a, an consulting engineer who are technical people who have dealt with this, say it's a hundred times the public level, how do you account that there's a problem in the radiation?
Thank you. Uh, in two ways. One is that the radiation calculation was at the center, if I can make this laser work, was at the center here of, which is a high point on our, and that's what they pointed it. We, our property comes up to the road cut and then there's the easement for the Fairview Road and our property is within about ten feet, ten or twelve feet of that. So, they didn't calculate it on an eye-to-eye level, nor did they calculate it on, at the nearest approach. And our avocado orchard, our producing avocado orchard is about thirty feet away, which both reports agree upon, about thirty feet away from the avocados.
Do you know the dissipating, uh, uh, power loss with respect to range from the antenna?
No, I'm not an electrical engineer. We oppose it on the grounds that all the presentations have been misleading in the sense of location in this and it just seems like an unfortunate choice.
What type of instrument did you use to, to check the effective radiant power?
We've not checked the effective, there is no, there's no antenna there now. We've not checked any radiation power. We're not capable of doing that. All I've done is with a laser rangefinder, I've measured how far I am away from the existing pole and, and I measured that, which we've listed in our presentation, listed that from the children's play yard about a hundred feet, from the avocado orchard about thirty feet, from the house about a hundred and twenty feet, and then from my nearest approach of our yard about ten feet, if I consider the, the, and where the antenna is on the four-foot bar, eight-foot bars.
All right. I understand what you're saying and before this is over, we'll have the engineer tell us about the affected radiated power with respect to direction at your particular azimuth, okay?
Sure, yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
One more. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, thank you. Just, if you would please, Mr. Burgett, clarify a couple of things for me because perhaps it's what I heard you say, but the pole, the proposed, there's the utility pole there now. Explain to me or tell me, please, the exact distance or what you think the distance is from your house?
About a hundred and ten feet.
Okay, so it is a hundred and ten feet? And is it, it is at, say, basically eye level?
Eye level, yes.
Okay. Um, do you have any pictures of the impedance of your view from your property of this pole?
We have a photo of our avocado orchards and we can see the pole through the avocado trees.
Do you have any pictures that we could look at?
I don't thi-
That we could see what this?
We, I don't, I don't think so, not the visual, the visual impact that you would receive of the pole, I'm not sure, I don't think we have.
Okay, but avocado orchards now surround your house?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so these are at?
On one side, on the, on this-
On the east side.
On the Fairview side, we have about one acre of producing avocados.
Okay, so they're at thirty feet, forty feet?
Uh, they're mature trees that were planted in the fifties and sixties by Bill Harold. They're probably twenty feet, yes.
Okay, so most likely you would only get glimpses-
That's correct.
Of the pole, which you now see.
That's correct.
Um, I note that part of your presentation, and I'm sorry, I really haven't had a chance to really get into this material, but it looks like some of the information that's in this article from nineteen ninety-nine is about the use of cellphones. And I, and it is different and perhaps staff, when we finish with public comment, can talk about the use of cellphone radiation versus that from cell towers, because I, I believe that there, there is a difference. I would just like to know.
In the, in the interest of, of power radiated, this is, uh, they're two hundred and fifty watt transmitters and I believe there are four of them at that site and so you're looking at kilowatts of transmitted power at that site.
Well, perhaps staff can address that after. And, um, let me see. I guess that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgett.
Thank you.
Next and last speaker is Karen Burgett.
Thank you. Just to clarify a couple of other things, avocados, trees aren't forever. They do have, you know, they get root problems and die out and if that happens and we lose that tree, then what we have is a big ugly antenna. In some of the photographs that were submitted and along with our papers, we also submitted pictures to show that, that top of that pole has been abandoned for usage by the electric company for several years. The, all that's necessary to, to continued usage of it is for the telephone and cable folks, which would be if they chopped that off at the proper height, as I showed, have shown in some, another picture that I submitted, that would blend more in with the hillside and have less impact on the visual aesthetics as you drive up north Fairview. The, the problem is that, you know, Southern California has these humongous towers on one side and to further degrade that by having now even much more of a silhouette against there of the antenna, really further makes that an ugly view. There's a couple of other things that we, we don't know whether or not, because it's very difficult, if you read the deed, description of the granting of the right-of-way easement, to determine just where that line ends. And with the erection of the pole ten feet on this, from the side of the road and then the antenna arms extending out four feet further, with the dangerous radiation five more feet further, it may well be over our, onto our property line, which would constitute a trespass of the unsafe radiation, at least the determination of the radiation by the FCC. The article that you mentioned that was talking about, you know, more my, about mobile phones, the complete article, although it did address a little bit about the mobile phone usage, was talking about the cellphone towers and the radiation there and that they say there's really no reason to have cellphone towers within, what was it, I may just refer to that number in my opposition, that's Exhibit C. And that is on page six of nine on Exhibit C, it said, they should, there's no reason why a properly erected and located tower should be closer than a minimum of two hundred to two hundred and fifty meters from any inhabited property and this location is much, much closer than that. There is also the issue, if you refer to the, the deed for the grant of the right-of-way that our predecessor owners granted to the county, it was for road purposes. And it is our position that the location of a commercial enterprise having nothing to do with the roads exceeds the permissive use of that right-of-way. And if the county is determined to go forward and allow this, we believe that any, any revenue flowing belongs to us, not to the county. But in any event, I think it's, it's very, the wrong step to take to, to decide this on basis that putting economics and a multinational foreign corporation ahead of any potential danger that we'll find out ten years from now is, oh my gosh, the FCC limits were not nearly low enough. We don't know that and I don't think that there, when you look at the, their, by their own admission, their, a paper is showing the, the proposed increase in usage isn't accurate by virtue of the fact that their, their existing usage wasn't accurate. They neglected to point out the, the fact that there's this large hill that comes down from the east that would block a lot of that towards Fairview and their, and their map doesn't really establish that fact at all. So, for the limited amount of increased usage or increased signal to a few properties, I don't think it's worth the potential exposure of harm to us, the potential or the very real incursion, incursion of the aesthetics contrary to the, the Galita Development Plan of that's saying it's got to be, you know, miss-improve things. I mean, we can't get the power poles undergrounded, but we should certainly be able to keep some of these additional things from flourishing. One of the other things is there is still a lot of controversy, but we don't really know what effect that, that radiation has on the bee population and avocados are very sensitive. I mean, we all need the bees for pollination and it's hard enough these days to, with winds and whatever we have, that, that prevent good pollination from occurring in our orchard and, and the possible effect that we don't know of that could affect the bees and, and further damage to our future crops. And then, I don't think that they're-
Ms. Burgett, could you wrap up, please? We don't have our timer working, but you're about six minutes by my-
Okay, the other thing is that I don't think that they properly reviewed for any co-location sites. We are, have cellphone coverage from a different carrier, AT&amp;T, and our coverage is adequate so we know that there's, there is coverage coming from other than T-Mobile. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burgett. Any other members of the public that haven't had a chance to complete a speaker slip? It doesn't appear so. So, we'll give Mr. Miller a chance to rebut the testimony for as quick a period as he can.
Just wanted to highlight a couple of things here. As far as us providing our applic-, providing our application to the city and going through the proper process, there was no deception on T-Mobile's part. We went through the required process here. As far as, as the address that was given, when we make plans for sites that don't have address, we usually try to include a preliminary address on our plans just to give a general location and that's what was located in the bottom right-hand corner of our plans that says preliminary address, eight seventy-five and a half North Fairview, because there is no address at that location. So, we just tried to give it some kind of marker to identify a general location for where it's at. So, any deception on that part was not intended, it was just strictly a way of giving out a location. For the, the coverage, again, the other maps with the green, with the yellow in the area, computer-generated, the maps that were handed out to you is actual field data that shows the, the coverage to the area or lack thereof. As far as having towers near residential areas, this is where our service is going to. Thirteen percent of people dropped in two thousand and six were only the cellphone only and dropped their landlines. In the next five years, that's, that's supposed to double according to figures here. So, that's where the gradual trend is taking us. And not only that, it's also, you know, it is public safety here that we're talking about too. People are looking for this in order to make their phone calls, their 911s. More and more phone calls being made on cellphones and 911s, you know, every day. And in fact, I was just on, you know, speaking of the fires in San Diego, I was reading about them yesterday online, pulled this up and it has Mayor Sanders from San Diego pleading with the residents to stay off their cellphones so emergency crews could do their work. Um, you know, that right there just said that, because it, it is, that's what they rely on. Whenever these, you know, natural hazards that do come about, you know, not only the, the fire crews, the police crews, you have the Red Cross. They rely on their cellphones, their pagers in order to get through this and even going through their email too, they, they have that as well. We actually, I, they attended one of our functions to say how much they, they do use wireless and that it does come in handy and it does, it is there for the public health, public safety and peace of mind, just to know that you do have that phone call that you can make and get help whenever you need it. And, let me look for one thing here. The, the other thing is with the other carrier having service in the area, each, each carrier has their own network, their own designs. We're not privileged to the information of where they're located. We can only go out visually, look at where they're at, whenever we have a search area that might work for our network. And the reason that each network's different and we're not privileged to their information is to make us competitive. That's what keeps your rates down, that's what keeps you to choose from, hey, I'm going to go to T-Mobile or I'm going to go to Verizon, Sprint, whatever it may be, whoever's going to provide the best coverage in the area, whoever has the best network. And so, that's what we're just, all we're trying to do is provide coverage in the area. Also, the capacity for our, our, our coverage and to other sites, in case there is some kind of natural disaster that does happen, the capacity's there, whether it's for T-Mobile, Verizon, that may be, you know, half a mile down the road that works within their network. We're just sitting there asking to go on a, on a utility pole. As far as the aesthetic, the way the antennas are located on there, they drop down the way, similar to what an insulator looks like on a, on a pole with the crossarms only coming out four feet. And with that, I just ask for your support and approval of this project.
Questions? Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Did you put, is your proposal for this site only because that pole, that currently, that pole currently exists and that you wouldn't have had to put another pole someplace else? Is that the reason that you put it on this particular pole?
Correct. And we wouldn't have to introduce a new vertical element, you're correct there and plus it allows us to do it as well because the poles on the other side, we can't have the clearance from, there's a certain clearance required from the utility lines.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the questions that we asked of the app, of the people asking for denial was, what was the effective radiated power at their home? The, and what is the affected radiated power? How does this diminish? Are you familiar with the inverse square law? You didn't have, you don't have an engineer, RF engineer, you don't have a RF engineer with you?
I, I do. Let's see if you-
There's, there's a statement on your document that says that you took a reading at ten thirty-five Fairview Avenue. Is that your address? They took a reading there and the power, effective radiated power was seven hundredths of one percent, which is pretty low. That was done by the consulting engineer? That's in the document, that's, you're verifying that?
I, I'm-
I'm Raymond Delacruz. I work with T-Mobile. This study was done by a third-party vendor, which was Hamlet and Edison. So I won't have the exact information on this.
You're not from Hamlet and Edison?
I'm with T-Mobile itself.
Oh, you're with T-Mobile?
But based on my experience with the foliage and if you're, especially if you're injured, it would definitely reduce the-
Are you an RF engineer?
Yes, sir.
So the effective radiated power at the antenna where it's radiated, and this is a thousand watts, what is it 10 feet from there roughly? Is it, does it diminish at a, you know, it says the inverse law, but in your experience, is it diminished when, when you measure, you don't have an antenna pattern or anything like that?
Um, I can't-
You don't have that information? You don't know that?
I don't have that information, sir. Sorry.
Okay. So we just have to go based on the report that we got here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chair. One more question, just of the last speaker, if he'd come back. You've indicated that foliage diminishes the emissions. Is that correct? So is the number that was provided in the report, does that consider the effect of the foliage in between, of the trees in between the source and the site where they measured it?
As far as the report was done, it was, it's done under the most extreme circumstances, the maximum it ever could be. So worst-case scenario.
Before you go away, Mr. Delacruz, my question has to do with the orientation of the signal down the hill. Does that make a difference if you're 116 feet to the downhill side versus having the 116 feet extend behind the antenna, if you will?
You mean having that pole located at somewhere else?
No, I'm talking here, we've had testimony that there are residents living full-time 116 feet from this pole. Does the orientation of the power source matter at all in that?
Yeah, especially if your, if your antennas are oriented directly at that house. It would have some effect on it.
So you would expect higher radiation levels if the antennas were aimed directly at the house?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then I'll ask Mr. Miller, your testimony is that these antennas will be oriented in the opposite direction from this house. Is that correct?
The antennas orientation are, I'm sorry, let me get the plans here.
140, 180, and 240.
Yeah, so that is, yeah, that is, that is away from the house.
The answer to that was if you have a whip and tin, then it's omnidirectional. But these are directional, so the effective radiated power would be directional along the azimuth of the orientation.
That's correct. Yeah, those are two different type of antennas. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Miller, you had also described the project as having some screening bushes adjacent to the, to the equipment boxes on the opposite side of Fairview. And the testimony was that, I believe Dr. Levin said that the bushes are described as being at maturity eight feet in width and the boxes themselves are 10 feet from the right-of-way. Can you verify those distances or give us different distances if you believe they exist?
Yeah. From the last time we were here, the distance of 10 feet was set and that included the bushes set back 10 feet from the edge of the roadway. That's what we've included to start with the bushes and then our equipment was set back further from there. So you are talking about an open space of 10 feet from the edge of the road before our landscaping starts.
Before the edge of the landscaping starts?
Correct.
So you could have, you could really be talking about 18 feet before you get to where the boxes are going to be placed?
Well, actually, where we're showing them currently is 11 feet off the road.
And I'm aware that it drops down rather precipitously there, so I'm not sure if you could get 18 feet away from the edge of the road and put the boxes in without building some sort of major structure. So I'm sympathetic to the neighbors' concerns that we want accurate information before we make a decision. So if you need more time to do that, we'll give you more time. But I don't want to shoot from the hip on the location of those boxes.
Well, as far as the screening of the antennas, if we're talking about the bushes, I can get a landscape architect in order to find out, you know, if it needs, you know, another couple of feet and we can just move the antennas back. So you're still talking about having the same screening, the same effect for the equipment cabinets there. You're still talking about the same clearance from the roadway, which was the issue because people do jog up and down there. And so we will keep them, you know, that will provide the screening. We can sit there, we'll trim them to make sure that they'll be out of the area, the 10-foot area there. So I think the concept in and of itself is still the same. It's not, you know, we're talking about maybe two or three feet of moving the equipment cabinets here and it still would be the same general location. And as far as those concerns, I think the concept is there. And if you need to, I can bring another set of plans back, but if you, I'm not sure if you're asking for another, another meeting for this to be held on it. If that's your desire, we can do that. But I think that the concept is there.
We may be able to do it by adjusting the conditions so it's clear how much distance the landscaping can be from the edge of the road or whatever else you're going to put out there. So we can condition it here today, I think.
I appreciate that.
Anything else for Mr. Miller?
No. I just have a comment. Having walked up in that area, actually physically walked up in that area, I think it's really critical that we have an understanding of where these boxes are, the cabinets are, and landscaping, because it's very perilous. People walk, there is no shoulder for people to walk. It's a gravel area, it's at the edge of the road and you have to walk some ways in. And I think that it's very important that we have that understanding of where these, the dimensions for all these, the landscaping material as well as the electrical cabinets.
All right, Mr. Miller, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll come back to staff now. Mr. Anthony and Ms. Allen, do you feel that the description you have is sufficient for you to exactly place where these boxes will go, where the landscaping will go, and how much distance we can maintain from the edge of the roadway there?
Mr. Chair, could you please repeat that question one more time?
Sure. You've heard the discussion we've had and we're concerned about the width of the clearance between the road and the edge of any screening landscaping as well as the exact location of the, of the equipment containers themselves. And it appears there's some confusion about that originally pointed out by Dr. Levin. And I want to be sure you have it straight. So if we were to approve this project, we'd know exactly what we're approving. And if you need more time, I want you to ask for it.
Mr. Chair, I guess we would need more time. I do have the roads division out there today. Mr. Jim Chaney and Andrew DeLu are looking at this site because they have a road encroachment application that has been approved, but I brought up the issue of erosion and placement of the equipment. And so they're supposed to get back to me today around lunch because they did a site visit this morning to look at the area. I think if we conditionally approve the location of the plant to be further back from the road, it would be okay with them.
Mr. Chair, we definitely get your point. I'm going to suggest a continuance, at least for this issue, so that we can get back out, have a clear, specific site. We understand the issue is to provide safe passage for pedestrians along that route, keep them from traffic. If you'd like to go forward, though, with the rest of the questions, so we can come back and focus solely on that issue, if we can go forward today and then continue at the end.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just looking at T-Mobile's plans, the equipment cabinet is set back 11 feet from the edge of the pavement. The plants, now these lemonade berries, I've got a couple in my backyard and get, they can get very big and bushy and they can grow 10 feet, 12 feet in diameter. And they have the plants set back so that they're only growing at 10 feet. So that only gives them, if you put the plant on center, they're six inches from the equipment cabinet and that is, you don't want to prune these plants. You want them as screening because if you start pruning them, you reduce the screening effect. So really, this is not satisfactory. The plants are far too close to the edge of the pavement to really allow them to fully expand and grow. So I think, I think it's wise that you relook at that particular issue.
The question, Commissioner Brown, is whether we want to move forward with the balance of the application at this time or whether we want to consider the whole thing at a continued hearing?
Well, I know that Commissioner Blau would like to go on. But let me just, let me just say, I think the issue for me, because it is of one of aesthetics here, these equipment cabinets are going to be very, they are intrusive on the landscape as you look at them. And I think the landscaping is going to be very important to resolve this particular issue. We may have some other issues that we can deal with today, but I would like to get some great clarity on that. So I, for me, it would be important to continue it, but Commissioner Blau may have a different-
Commissioner Blau.
Well, actually, what's more important for me is that we just have an adequate walkway for the pedestrians to go in there. So my idea, well, my suggestion would be that we, you know, a standard sidewalk is six feet. So I think you need to maintain a minimum of six-foot clearance. And I think the staff could approve some other landscape material that would not grow into the six-foot area. What's important is the six feet. And if you want screening, pick some other kind of landscaping, get it screened, but six feet's important to me.
You know, I've walked up in that area and cars drive very fast up Fairview. There is no safe, six feet is not safe for a pedestrian. Believe me, even a bicyclist, you walk up there and these cars whiz right by you and it's scary. I don't think six feet's enough. I think you need, I think you need to have as much clearance as that you possibly can and 10 feet would be enough. The problem is with Fairview is there are people who go up there and there is, this is not a pedestrian-friendly area. It's really very pedestrian, unsafe, and it's really quite, as I said, scary to walk up there because cars whiz by you, they don't care, they, it's, I think what we need to do, we can to make sure that there's as much clearance as we can here. And for me, 10 feet, if we can get 10 feet, I would be happy with that. Six feet, I'm not happy with because what happens, sometimes cars pull in here. I pulled in there doing my site visit when I, six feet isn't going to be enough.
Can we identify the conditions that apply to the setback of the towers and, I mean, not the tower, the equipment? And we'll, we'll come back to that condition or conditions at a future hearing.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. And why Ms. Allen is looking for that, those conditions in response to some of the testimony and some of the questions from your commission, I would like to note that we typically, as we do with this permit condition, that we have actual radiation readings done once the project is up and operating and we follow through every five years or more frequently if there are changes to the site to ensure what the actual readings are. Though we are, as you noted, obligated to only ensure that they meet the FCC standards. And I believe that's condition 111. I would also like to know as far as the accuracy of the reports submitted, that we have retained Dr. Bushberg, as Ms. Allen mentioned earlier, to help us have the expertise to ensure that our projections are made correctly and also the subsequent readings are made accurately as well. And he does the same type of work for other local governments throughout the state.
Mr. Chair, as I read the conditions, it does talk about landscape screening, but it doesn't really, it just says that there will be eight five-gallon lemonade berries, but it doesn't give sort of the distances or where they'd be planted in relationship to the equipment area.
No, I'm just concerned at this point, which conditions, we need to revisit. So it sounds like that's the right one, condition 11?
Condition two. Condition 11 was towards the RF.
Oh, okay. So I think the proposal is that we move forward with the project approval at this time with the exception of condition two, which we would schedule at a future hearing.
Mr. Chair, actually, that's, that's not what I think Mr. Anthony was recommending. He just wanted to know if there were any other issues that the commission had that you wanted us to investigate prior to coming back at a continued hearing. So we're not suggesting you take action on everything, but the location, I think it's better if we just take action on the permit at a, at a future hearing. We just want to be prepared to do so.
Any other issues?
Yeah, I would just like from my own information, because we see these projects not too frequently. And I did ask this question about the amount of radiation from a cellphone versus a cell site that one receives, because there is a difference. And I think the issue, as I read in the literature that was provided, is that it's about cellphones. Now, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I also have another question. In the easement which they gave, they provided to us, the right-of-way, I guess, it talked about, I think it was Mrs. Burgett, talked about for all the uses and purposes of a public road. And on our public roads, we, we allow cell sites. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, members of the commission, the Public Utilities Code provides for the use of public roads for-
Okay.
-telephones, telephone lines, telephone corporations. And the courts have interpreted that to include telecommunications sites as telephone providers.
All right, thank you.
So we do not have the ability to say, no, not on our public roads. That was one issue that was raised. And with your permission, Mr. Chair, just to raise, to, for the public's benefit, once again, to emphasize the extent to which the county's hands are tied and your hands are tied, it is, it is federal law in the Telecommunications Act of 1996 that, and I'll just read from it, this portion, "No state or local government," I'm skipping a few words, "may regulate the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions to the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulations regarding such emissions." And then the FCC sets those, those limits that we've been talking about. And I know some of you have a general idea that, that we do have our hands tied by those federal regulations. But the courts have consistently said, we, you cannot, the commission is not to discuss and use as a basis for its decision the potential health effects unless there's evidence that the health effects, or rather, that the emissions are greater than what the FCC prescribes. So it's, it's not perhaps that your commission wouldn't like to investigate more or know more and there's nothing precluding all of us from educating ourselves, investigating more and contacting our federal representatives, but it is not within the purview of this commission to do anything other than follow the law.
And Commissioner, I mean, I'm sorry, Chair Cooney will be happy to get information to all the commissioners comparing the radiation emitted from cellphones versus cell sites and other sources of radiation.
I think it would be helpful to review these matters. Commissioner Brown is correct. We have had fewer applications come to the commission in the last year than, than earlier. And I think some of that has to do with the scope of the county's discretion to approve and, and deny these projects. But in any event, it would be helpful, Mr. Anthony, to kind of do an update on your briefing and I think it would be useful for the public to, to understand that as well.
It's probably most timing because we have quite a few applications that have just come in. These things ebb and flow and so you'll be seeing a lot more in the near future.
Great.
Okay. So I guess the question, Mr. Chair, is whether, is, just to continue at the whole project rather than-
That's right.
-to the next, and I'm just wondering from Mr. Miller, when that might be good and maybe we'll get Ms. Black to figure out- be good and we'll get Ms. Black to figure out when that might be good for our calendar.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, we have the same issue as we did on the previous project. November 7th is in Santa Barbara, but is quite full.
When's the next light South County date?
December 5th. But this, this matter, I don't think will take much.
Chairman Cooney, I'm just, I'm asking a question here procedurally. Could, the only issue here is the landscape material and the setback, am I correct? Could maybe staff worked on it and put on a consent calendar, a consent item, and if you don't like what you see, we'll pull it off the consent calendar. That way we can put it out at the next meeting and it's not going to be a problem. That'd be my suggestion.
Do you think we can work it out by November 7?
There's no need for public hearing, it's just a matter of we just, make sure you like it, prove it, we're done.
Mr. Chair, then I would suggest we just continue this to November 7th.
Okay.
I want it in the South County so that the neighbors can be present if they choose.
I, I don't have any problems with that. I just want to make sure staff understands our concerns about the landscaping and the size of its growth and its setback, so that when we get that, it's, we don't have to pull it off calendar.
Chair Cooney, we do understand, let me repeat it to ensure, we have equipment shelter in the right-of-way and we have landscaping and the concern is that this hinders safe passage of pedestrians on the road. And we want to first of all find out what would be a good buffer for safe passage and secondly, how can we design the equipment shelter and the landscaping to fall within that?
That's it exactly, Mr. Anthony. Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My understanding was from what county council said is that we have no discretion on the aesthetic aspects of this project. All that we have is safety, no? We do have aesthetic.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, no, with respect to the RF emissions, you cannot use the emission level as a basis for denial if it is compliant with the FCC established limits.
Okay, we're talking around. All right.
Suggestions been made for November 7th, you want to make that motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make that motion to continue the project to November 7th on the consent calendar.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Opeland, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Vote carries 4-0.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Allen, Mr. Anthony, and everyone. We have one more item, commissioners, it's 10 to 1. It won't take long, I'm told. This is a briefing, actually a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on an ordinance amendment. So we need to consider that with staff's assistance and we can do that right away or we can take a brief break for lunch, however, however you wish.
How long will the briefing take, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Black?
Mr. Chair, I think, and commissioners, I think it took the Montecito Planning Commission who's more affected by this, maybe 10 minutes.
Okay, fine. And I see with Mr. Langle coming in that we probably could do it now within five, maybe, if that would be the...
All right.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, we'll just continue on then. Ms. Opeland, will you please read item four into the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Planning and Development Department that the County Planning Commission consider and adopt a resolution recommending that the County Board of Supervisors adopt an ordinance case number 07ORD3.
Thank you, Mr. Langle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. I will keep this brief given the, the new hour. This project basically is an outgrowth of the zoning ordinance reforming project that began in 2003 and culminated in 2006 with the adoption by the Board of Supervisors of two new land use and development codes for the County of Santa Barbara. The county land use and development code currently contains all the zoning regulations pertaining to the whole of the coastal zone within the County of Santa Barbara and the inland area of the County of Santa Barbara outside of the Montecito planning area. The Montecito land use and development code only includes those zoning regulations that apply to the inland area of the Montecito community plan area. During the processing of these development codes, the Board of Supervisors did commit to, once these new codes were adopted, to then going back and creating a separate land use and development code for the Montecito planning area that contained both the coastal zone regulations as well as the inland zone, inland area regulations. And that's what's be sort of the project before us today. Doing this involves amending both the Montecito development code to put those coastal zone regulations into the document, as well as amending the county development code to remove the existing regulations that pertain to the Montecito planning area from the, from the county land use development code. This project was reviewed by the Montecito Planning Commission at their hearing last week and they did vote unanimously to recommend that your planning commission recommend to the board that they adopt this amendment to the county development code to remove those Montecito zoning regulations. This development code, the draft before you today, also includes the recent amendments that have been adopted by the Board of Supervisors regarding using zoning clearances to allow for following a CUP or DP, approving a CDP, coastal development permit concurrent with the CUP and the development plan, as well as shifting the jurisdiction of a CDP in the appeals jurisdiction where there's been a waived hearing to the planning director. It's, you know, from, from the county planning commission standpoint, it's a very simple endeavor.
Commissioner Brown?
But I have a question, Mr. Langle. What mechanism allowed the Hope Ranch Park Homes Association to ask for this inclusion? Not that I disapprove, I'm just, how does a community group do that?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cover that in my presentation. Commissioner Brown and members of the County Planning Commission, the, the director of the Hope Ranch Homes, Park Homes Association contacted me and said, "It's the desire of our board of directors to change the existing building separation requirements for Hope Ranch to be similar to that's basically what's required in the rest of the county. How do we do that?" And I said, "Well, we're going to have a comprehensive redo of the county development code coming up in the near future. If your board will send me a, a letter requesting that, I can include it into the document and we can deal with it that way instead of having to have a separate application, et cetera."
Any other questions for Mr. Langle? Just on the Hope Ranch matter, Mr. Langle, the request is coming from the board of directors, which of course is not necessarily all the individuals in Hope Ranch, but I was a little surprised the, the separation proposals, reducing the separation between buildings from what it had been prior to that. But you're saying that it, that the reduced spacing is consistent with the rest of the county?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. It will put it on the same level as that which is required for the, the common R1 or E1 zone district for the county. This request was, it was brought up at the request of homeowners within Hope Ranch that desired to construct accessory structures closer than what was normally required. This was reviewed by their, their own architectural review committee who agreed with the recommendation and then ultimately during a hearing by their board of directors resulted in them voting to recommend, to request the county make the changes as portrayed in the staff report.
This change has not been reviewed by the South Board of Architectural Review, has it?
No, it hasn't, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So it's been regarded by staff as just a, a formal change to the ordinance itself, but really hasn't been reviewed as a separate application and project?
That's correct. It was sort of folded into this project as an efficiency measure, given that there was over, well, there seemed to be overwhelming support from the Hope Ranch Association, who's the one, is, which is the only area that the EX zone applies to. I didn't feel it was necessary to run this before our local design body. However, the BAR can certainly impose greater requirements if they deem necessary in their review of individual specific projects. I would just like to point out that these projects would still have to go through the Hope Ranch ARC, Architectural Review Committee, and receive approval by that committee in order to proceed at all, since their CCNRs require the approval by that body.
My concern is process, not the substance of it, but, you know, normally something affecting architectural guidelines as closely as this proposed amendment would receive Architectural Board of Review, our Architectural Board of Review consideration. So at the very least, perhaps we can get some input prior to the adoption by the board if we recommended that that be the case.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to go to the South BAR and, and let them know of this proposed change and get their input before we go.
It, it just could be that we're not architectural experts as we're talking all along and so I, it sounds fine to me, Mr. Langle, it's, it's efficiency, but I just soon have, since we have these bodies in place for this purpose, that at least they become aware of it before adoption by the board. Any other comments, Commissioner Valencia? No, okay. Do we have a motion then with regard to staff's recommendation?
I'd like to move staff's recommendation, Mr. Chair, with the provision that Mr. Langle take this before the South County Architectural Board of Review, before it goes to the board. And to get their, if, if they have any other comment, just to have their recommendation.
Second.
All right. The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, we're ready for the roll call then, Ms. Opeland.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Vote carries 4-0.
Thank you. This concludes the business of the Planning Commission for today, the 24th of October and for the month of October 2007. Thank you very much, we'll see you in November.